The call to order. We request the Honorable MP Ibrahim Ali to lead the invocation. Honorable Ibrahim Ali.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Amin ya rabbul alamin. Alhamdulillah rabbul alamin. Ar rahmanir rahim, mahliki amiddin. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka na'sa'in. Ihdinas syaratul mustaqim. Syaratul ladzina an'amta alaihim. Ghairil maghdubi alaihim maladholin. Amin. Allahumma arinal haqqa haqqa. Ihad al-maqam, warzuqna ittiba'a. Wa arinal baatila baatila, warzuqna intinabaya Allahumma. Allahumma, wali umrana, xiyarana, wala toli umrasharrana. Allahumma, asla'hlana dinana, ladzi hu asmat umrina. Wasla'hlana duniyana, ladzi piya ma'asyuna. Wasla'hlana akhara'tana, ladzi lema dunai Allahumma. Allahumma mina nusaluka al-jannah. Wama yuqaribuna ilaiha min qawlinna wa fe'dina. Wana'uzubika minanar. Wama yuqaribuna ilaiha min qawlinna wa fe'dina awal dinna Allahumma. Allahumma la'ta'gi'ani duniya akbarahaminna walama blagh'm. Allahumma fe'qula ta'umrina. Wa idum minasrika wa tahriri, bilyadina bangsa moro. Li iqamati da'ula al-aadilah. Awilah, hukumatil adilah. Ah, taqumu li maslahati hadashab. Shab moro al-muslim. Wa Allahumma rabbana tinafid duniya hassana. Apil akhara'ta hassana tawakina adabannat. Sallallahu alaihi wasallamina Muhammad. Wa ala ali wasahbussalam bi rahmati kaya rahmatul rahimin. Walhamdulillahi rabbul alamin.
We've been standing for the singing of the national anthem to be followed by the bangsa moro hymn.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang pagibing, kadas masira naan. Halam ng puso, sadiqik po'y buhay. Lu pangibigang, uyakanang magiting. Saman lutupin, ikapasi sidin. Sanagatang tutung sa sibuyan sunang. Ayinatang tutlakawin sa, kantayang bidamar. Kapis tapat, kua'tawat, kuitat, kuytaranat ibigay. Kapitugin atarot napaydar, omaydibat ibigay. Lu bagataraun, gakwar, habikpatsikka. Ue'gakitsa, bibigbo. Amibidaya, napartay, wagabi. Apoloytay, namtay, usayon. Simula on hanggang ngayon, isang daging layon. Magkaisaan, pagulon, karitingan ay baguton. Ngayon tayo, kulas sa hamon ng naktar. Iyakusang paganit na buhanlang. Inagaku sa puso at paliniwala, ang ihawang para sa kabataan. Bangsa moro ay daguntay. Kulang pa wis suot buhay. Kabayapan, kataukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsa moro. Bangsa moro, bangsa moro, lagi kang mamahalim. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangatoy tutuparin. Halam buhay, kami saloy magparantay, mananati sa puso't isipan. Ang kahakununin, tayhanat buwis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may trapal. Bangsa moro ay daguntay. Kulang pa wis suot buhay. Kabayapan, kataukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalayin bangsa moro.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll.
Roll call of the Honorable Members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Abbas Ahmad. Abbas Haron. Abbas Masid. Abu Mujib. Alais. Alaujik Mustair. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lala Junior. Ali Eddy. Ambulutu Suharto. Aminudin Abdulajiz. Ampatuman Mahintan. Martin Susana. Antao Muhammad Keli. Bernard Marian. Asnavi Dan. Babang Ali Taha. Kalitong Pangalian. Basman An Tarkata. Tawan Antayan.
Present.
Dilangalan Hashimi. Duma Maalba Sya Ilaiha. Ibrahim Ahud. Ismail Suharto. Estilo Matarol. Gayak Abdawa. Gera Edward. Haji Abdawa Khalid. Hasim Abdawa. Hasan Hatimil. Iqbal Mohager. Ismail Rasul. Jajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Tikiri Albakil. Kahalanden Martin. Karun Faisal. Lim John Anthony. Long Benjamin. Long Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose. Makakuwa Abdurao. Makapaar Abdawa. Makasalong Marjani. Makatanong Amrosi. Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantawil Bailing. Mastura Ishak. Matalam Jafar Apollo Mikael. Mawallil Amil Bahar. Mendoza Proylin. Midimbang Michael. Midimbang Tawakal. Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Nur Redda. Mitmo Grasol Junior. Munyus Hussein. Uranon Swaebe. Pakasam Ubaidah. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Parkasio Randolph. Piang Ramon Senior. Ramos Jamila. Salindab Said. Salik Ali. Sanki Ali. Semao Mariaser. Semao Romeo. Sheikh Said. Silungan Aida. Sinulinding Kadil Junior. Sulaiman Ali. Tago Paisalin. Tan Nabil. Usman Adspar. Utu Basir. Uyoyod Sitifahani. Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillah, wabihiinas ta'in. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, with fifty-two members of the parliament physically responded to the call and five responded via Zoom. Sir Speaker, we therefore have a total of fifty-seven ah responded both physically and virtually. We therefore certify Mr. Speaker the presence of coram. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With fifty-two members present reported to recall certified by the Secretary General, the chair declares the presence of a coram. The chair is suspended for one minute.
Pwede bang ipacheck itong volume? Di rin marinig do'n. Halo, 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 halo. Halo, halo. Siom. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Aldabilahiminasyaitonirajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, wasallatu wasalamu ala rasulillah amabad. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Ah, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, before we proceed with the items in the agenda, may I be allowed to recognize some guests that are present during today's session?
Nasa reading. Nasa reading and approval pa tayo ng journal.
Ah, yes. Ah, okay. We'll proceed first. Mr. Speaker, because of the unavailability of the printed ah journals for sessions on the twenty-sixth of January and seventeenth of February, ah, I move that we defer consideration of these journals for next session until they-
-of January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three and Journal number twenty of February seventeen, July-
Speaker, before we proceed with our ah with the next items-
Please proceed.
Director for Southeast Asia and the Pacific. Tool. The Philippine Program Director, Salik Exanshareef Junior and the Philippine Program Manager, Mary Jean Liberato. Ah, may-
So we can recognize them. It's at your back. Wel- welcome to the parle-
Well, Mr. Speaker, ah dear old friends ah from the civil society as well, from We Act thirteen-twenty- Mr. Reima de Ma'ampaw, Ms. City Nor Dayhana Muhammad. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There being no ah items under reference of business. Ah, we proceed, Mr. Speaker, with bills and second reading under consideration is Committee Report number five ah on Parliament Bill number twenty-nine and ah may we request the Secretary General to read the title and the authors of the bill.
Can we, can we suspend eh for five minutes so that we will allow them? They are roaming around to distribute the copies. Session suspended for five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we move to may we request the Secretary General to read the title and the author for Committee Report Number Five submitted by the committee.
Secretary General will please read the committee report number and the act.
Committee Report Number Five submitted by the Committee on Rules, R B T A Parliament Bill Number Twenty Nine entitled, An Act Providing for the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code of the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindenaw, author the government of the day.
Mr. Speaker, uh, at present the Secretariat is still collate to our members that we allow first the uh verbal or oral reporting of the Chair of the Committee on Rules on this and the printed copies will follow before the actual deliberation of the committee report.
That a motion?
That is a motion, miss, and an appeal.
There's a motion, Julie seconded, to allow the uh floor leader to report, the real floor leader to report.
The real.
The committee report. And and the acting and the acting to give way. Uh, but using using the electronic copy first while the printed copies of the committee report will be uh distributed soon as the printing is ongoing. So may we ask the MP, Lais Layha Dumama Alba, to please present the committee report. Please proceed.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. And good afternoon, my courtesy is to the speaker, the real speaker.
Bow it.
Attorney, pangalan balindong and my beloved kuya, the acting speaker and presiding officer for today, Deputy Speaker Attorney Nabiltan. Uh, sa aking mga kapwa, um, members of the parliament, magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. I am privileged to be reporting on uh the committee report of the Committee on Rules on the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code. The Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code is one of the priority legislations entrusted to the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority pursuant to Republic Act Number One One Zero Five Four or the organic law for the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindenaw. The B E C shall be consistent with national election laws, allow democratic participation, encourage the formation of genuinely principled political parties, and ensure accountability. Further, it shall embody an electoral framework that is responsive to the needs and aspirations of the Bangsa-Moro people and empower them to pursue the right to self-determination within the ambit of the Philippine Constitution. R A One One Zero Five Four prescribes a parallel electoral system for the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region, combining proportional representation in the first past the post systems and allotting reserved seats to electorally underrepresented or marginalized sectors under Article Seven, Section Seven, Paragraphs A, B, and C. R A Eleven Zero Fifty Four, Section Seven under Article Seven provides that the classification and allocation of seats in the parliament shall be classified as followed, as follow. A, party representatives, one half of the members of the parliament shall be representatives of political parties who are elected through a system of proportional representation. B, parliamentary district seats, not more than forty percent of the members of the parliament shall be elected from single-member parliamentary districts. And C, reserved seats and sectoral representatives shall constitute at least ten percent of the members of the parliament, which shall include two reserved seats each for non-Moro indigenous peoples and settler communities. Women, youth, traditional leaders, and ulama shall have one sectoral seat each. Thus, the government of today filed Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority Parliament Bill Number Twenty Nine entitled, An Act Providing for the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code of the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindenaw on September nineteen twenty twenty two. B T A Parliament Bill Number Twenty Nine prescribes the structural, functional, and procedural principles in the election of the members of the parliament in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region and encourage the formation of genuinely principled political parties. It aims to secure honest, credible, just, and free elections that reflect the genuine will of the electorate and allow a wider democratic political participation of different stakeholders. On its second reading, B T A Parliament Bill Number Twenty Nine was referred to the Committee on Rules. To ensure the full participation of the various stakeholders from across the social-political spectrum in the deliberation process, the Committee on Rules conducted twelve different public consultations in nine locations within the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region and in Metro Manila. The committee conducted public consultations in the following areas. Quezon City on October twenty and twenty one twenty twenty two, in Isabela City, Basilan on December five twenty twenty two, in Patikul, Sulu, December five and seven twenty twenty two, Bongao, Tawi-Tawi on December five and seven twenty twenty two, in Cotabato City on January eighteen twenty twenty three, in Midsayap North Cotabato on January nineteen twenty twenty three, at Buluan Magindano del Sur on January thirty twenty twenty two, in Datuodin Sinswat Magadano del Norte on January thirty twenty twenty two, and in Marawi City, Lano del Sur on January thirty one twenty twenty three. It invited experts and stakeholders from national offices including Commission on Elections, local government units, civil society organizations, election watchdogs, the academe, religious sector, indigenous peoples, women, youth, traditional leaders, and other stakeholders to gather their official position and consolidate their issues, concerns, and recommendations. The exercise afforded by the consultative process provided a unique opportunity for stakeholders to share their insights and suggestions on improving the proposed code and taking part in charter charting the future of the Bangsa-Moro. The Committee on Rules through its Secretariat called for the submission of position papers beginning in September twenty twenty two up until March twenty twenty three, receiving and processing a total of one hundred six position papers on the legislative measure. After gathering and consolidating comments and recommendations through public consultations and review of position papers, the committee conducted a series of committee meetings for ten days, spanning one month during which provisions of the bill were subjected to intensive line-by-line legislative scrutiny. To facilitate the discussion and consolidation of the proposed amendments, I, as the Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, led a small group composed of my fellow mem- uh floor leaders to confer with the Commission on Elections and study the recommendations and proposed languaging of the code. The small group is composed of the B T A Deputy Floor Leaders, Vice Chair, MP Attorney Raisa Jajuri, MP Attorney Mary Ann Arnado, MP Ana Tarhata Basman, and MP Jose Lorena. The small group presented suggested amendments to the provisions, taking into consideration the discussions and agreements reached during committee meetings as well as the consolidated submitted proposed language from the committee members and position papers submitted by other stakeholders. Another round of deliberations were conducted for committee members to thoroughly scrutinize the suggested amendments. And finally, yesterday evening, March six twenty twenty three, the Committee on Rules resolved to recommend the approval of B T A Bill Number Twenty Nine and the committee report with amendments. Hence, the committee report that we are going to tackle this session. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the parliament, I invite you to take a final look at the committee report including the draft bill and the proposed bill, and we pray that it passes within the timeline of this week. Thank you very much for your kind attention. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Uh, one minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended for one long minutes.
...
First to ask, I move again Mister Speaker to open the period of interpolations.
Already, already seconded and approved. Uh you can now proceed to recognize those who have reserved and those who wish to interpolate.
Yes, the first to ask his questions Mister Speaker is MP Don Loong.
Thank you uh majority floor lead.
MP Don Loong is recognized, you have the pleasure sir.
Thank you Mister Speaker, I will be swift and direct to the point. First point Mister Speaker is regarding section eight article uh four. Regarding the effect of nomination of uh of candidates for members of parliament. It seems to clash with article seven section one.
What is your premise at article eight section four? Article four section eight.
Yes, um. Article. Article four section eight, the effect of nomination clashes with uh section one of article seven, it's in page twenty one.
One. Section one article seven.
One section states that when you are nominated by a political party you are not deemed resigned whether you are appointed or elected. On the other hand, under page twenty one um which is.
Just just cite the section and the article not the page.
Section one article seven. It states that the person who accepts nomination is deemed resigned. So can we uh get clarification on this? Section one, can we go to article seven election administration? Section one, it reads subject to exceptions provided in this code any person holding a public appointive office or position including active members of the AFP shall be considered ipso facto resigned from office.
That is the answer.
So, are we saying that the we are referring to the exception to the rule? And therefore what we are saying is that whether you're holding an appointive or elective position is you are not deemed resigned. The implication of which is that all director generals of the Bangsa Moro government can be nominated and they are not deemed resigned. This will have implications Mister Speaker wherein powers and influence and resources of government can be used by political parties by nominating career executives holding influential and powerful and resource laden government posts.
If I may respond Mister Speaker.
Yes Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
Please proceed.
The import of section one under article seven is that it is the general the general rule is that any person holding a public appointive office or position is deemed ipso facto resigned from his or her uh office upon filing of the certificate of candidacy. The exception is section eight of article four as well as section three of article ten. So there are two exceptions provided in this code. Why uh why is it that the um nomination of uh an individual who holds appointive office as a party nominee does not make him ipso facto resigned? It is, it finds basis in Komelik resolution number nine three six six which is also practiced in the party list system in the national government. That those who are uh nominated under the party list who actually are uh public appointees or public officials are not deemed resigned. And the lame duck um provision or principle meaning the one year prohibition from appointment does not always does not also apply to him or her. So this finds legal basis in a Komelik resolution Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, do when we say appointive, do we refer to regular rank and file employees?
Yes Mister Speaker.
So, meaning rank and file employees, career executives who are nominated to a political party as members of parliament are not deemed resigned.
That is correct Mister Speaker because it is the party that is running and not the individual Mister Speaker.
Party unit.
So Mister Speaker uh does that mean that there is no um that there is actually um that everything falls within the exception to the rule?
That is not accurate Mister Speaker. Those who are running as district representatives and sectoral representatives are deemed resigned Mister Speaker because it is them as individuals running and not a party.
Last on this point Mister Speaker is that on a political note uh I just hope that there is no implication with uh senior, for example director generals of the ministries of the Bangsa Moro being nominated for political parties. Doesn't that mean that they will be influenced and they will become very political in nature being nominees one year prior to the election?
Mister Speaker, that is uh something that we cannot speculate on but uh the rule that we apply is something that is also applied in the national party list system. So there should no there should not be any distinction Mister Speaker.
Thank you Mister Speaker, to be fast I'll move to the next regarding vacancies. I'm concerned that the vacancies for traditional leaders have not been uh uh clearly stated unlike the one in the IPs. Would it be possible that there will be clear provisions for the succession in the traditional leader aspects of the sectoral representatives?
Mister Speaker, there is a common provision in regard to the vacancy in uh sectoral repres- representation representative seats especially to those three uh named which the election or the selection of which is provided for in this uh bill so let me just. If you could kindly refer to section thirty seven of article four Mister Speaker. Failure of election of NMIPs, traditional leaders and ulama sectoral representatives. In case of failure of the NMIPs, traditional leaders and ulama to elect their respective representatives in the parliament within the period provided by the BO the seats reserved for this particular sectors shall remain vacant until such time that the representative is selected Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, um my question was more directed to succession in terms of if we are defining Sultanate being represented in the traditional leaders will the rotation immediately apply when there is disability or death of a traditional leader representative? Or will a traditional leader from the same Sultanate take over and complete the term?
Floor leader may answer.
There is no equivalent provision on this uh as it is written Mister Speaker and we can improve the language. But um my sense during the committee meeting my sense during the committee meeting is that uh it will have to be uh they the the sector will have to go through the same process uh of electing or selecting the the traditional leadership representative.
Are you looking for MP Marjani?
Yes.
He is around. Maybe MP Marjani can uh can help the floor leader.
Yes MP Marjani but I think the sense during the committee meeting um when uh the this particular portion of the bill was uh being discussed is that and not only traditional leaders Mister Speaker that they have to go through the same process in order to come uh uh to uh to elect another um representative Mister Speaker. Including filling the vacancies Mister Speaker.
Mi- Mister Speaker, on the same topic about traditional leaders we know that the Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage will be the one tasked to certify that a nominee is a traditional leader. And that they have a track record in in terms of advocacy. Mister Speaker, um does this are we aware of the responsibility that we will be giving to the uh Bangsa
Article four, section eight, the effect of nomination. Clashes with uh. Section one of article seven, it's in page twenty one.
One. Section one, article seven.
W- one section states that when you are nominated by a political party. You are not deemed resigned whether you are appointed or elected. On the other hand, under page twenty one. Um which is.
Just just cite the section and the article, not the page.
Section one, article seven. It states that the uh person who accepts nomination is deemed resigned. So can we uh get clarification on this? Section one, can we go to article seven, election administration? Section one, it reads. Subject to exceptions provided in this code, any person holding a public appointive. Office or position, including active members of the A F P. Shall be considered ipso facto resigned from office.
That is the answer.
So, are we saying that the. We are referring to the exception to the rule and therefore. What we are saying is that whether you're holding an appointive or elective position. Is you are not deemed resigned, the implication of which is that. All director generals of the Bangsa Moro government can be nominated and they are not deemed resigned. This will have implications, Mister Speaker. Wherein powers and influence and resources of government. Can be used by political parties by nominating. Career executives holding influential and powerful and resource laden government posts.
If I may respond, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
Please proceed.
The import of section one under article seven. Is that it is the general the general rule is that any person holding a public appointive office or position. Is deemed ipso facto resigned from his or her up uh office upon filing of the certificate of candidacy, the exception. Is section eight. Of article four as well as section. Three of article ten, so there are two exceptions provided in this code. Why uh why is it that the um nomination of. Uh an individual who holds a pointy face as a party nominee. Does not make him ipso facto resigned. It is, it finds basis in Comelec resolution number nine three six six. Which is also practiced in the party list system in the national government. That those who are uh nominated under the party list. Who actually are uh public appointees, are uh public officials, are not deemed resigned. And the lame duck um pro- provision or principle. Meaning the one year prohibition from appointment does not always does not also apply to him or her. So this finds legal basis in a Comelec resolution, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, do when we say appointive, do we refer to regular rank and file employees?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
So, meaning rank and file employees, career executives. Who are nominated to a political party as members of parliament are not deemed resigned.
That is correct, Mister Speaker, because it is the party that is running and not the individual, Mister Speaker.
Party unit.
So Mister Speaker. Uh, does that mean that there is no um that there is actually. Um that everything falls within the exception to the rule?
That is not accurate, Mister Speaker. Those who are running as district representatives and sectoral representatives are deemed resigned. Mister Speaker, because it it is them as individuals running and not a party.
Last on this point, Mister Speaker, is that on a political note. Uh I just hope that there is no implication with uh senior. For example, director generals of the ministries of the Bangsa Moro being nominated for political parties. Doesn't that mean that they will be influenced? And they will become very political in nature being nominees one year prior to the election?
Mister Speaker, that is uh something that we cannot speculate on, but uh. The rule that we apply is something that is also applied in the national. Party list system, so there should no uh there there should not be any distinction, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. To be fast, I'll move to the next regarding vacancies. I'm concerned that the vacancies for traditional leaders have not been uh. Uh clearly stated unlike the one in the I Ps. Would it be possible that there will be clear provisions for the succession in the. Traditional leader aspects of the sectoral representatives?
Mister Speaker, there is a common provision in regard to the vacancy. In uh sectoral repres- representation representative seats, especially to those three uh named which. The election or the selection of which is provided for in this uh bill, so. Let me just. If you could kindly refer to section thirty seven of article four, Mister Speaker. Failure of election of N M I Ps, traditional leaders and ulama sectoral representatives, in case of failure of the N M I Ps. Traditional leaders and ulama to elect their res- respective representatives in the parliament within the period provided by the B E O. The seats reserved for this particular sector shall remain vacant until such time that the representative is selected, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, um my question was more directed to succession in terms of. If we are defining sultanates being represented in the traditional leaders. Will the rotation immediately apply when there is disability or death of a traditional leader representative? Or will a traditional leader from the same Sultanate take over and complete the term?
Floor leader may answer.
There is no equivalent provision on this uh as it is written, Mister Speaker, and we can improve the language. But um my sense during the committee meeting. My sense during the committee meeting is that uh it will have to be uh they the. The sector will have to go through the same process uh of electing or selecting the. The traditional leadership presenter.
Are you looking for M P Marjani?
Yes.
He is around. Maybe M P Marjani can uh can help the floor leader.
Yes, M P Marjani, but I think the sense during the committee meeting. Um when uh the this particular portion of the bill was uh being discussed is that. And not only traditional leaders, Mister Speaker, that they have to go through the same process. In order to come uh uh to uh to elect another um representative, Mister Speaker. Including filling the vacancies, Mister Speaker.
Mi- Mister Speaker, on the same topic about traditional leaders. We know that the Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage. Will be the one tasked to certify that a nominee is a traditional leader. And that they have a track record in in terms of advocacy. Mister Speaker, um does this. A- are we aware of the responsibility that we will be giving to the uh Bangsa Moro um. Cultural heritage commission for the preservation of cultural heritage, two things, number one. They will certify that a person is a mem- is a traditional leader in the registration. And number two, as a candidate. Considering the unwritten tradition. Of our sultanates, are we aware of the intense. Responsibility we are given giving to the commission?
Mister Speaker. It is uh written in the B O L under section twenty five of article nine, Mister Speaker, that. The Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage shall have the primary responsibility. To write the history of the Bangsa Moro people and shall coordinate closely with. Um. The sultanates, no, right there. The sultanates such as those of Sulu, Magindanao, Kabuntalan, Buayan, so that's in the B O L, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker. Under the same article four, it states that. Traditional leaders are those referring to the royal sultanates in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao. This shall include the sultanates of Sulu, Magindanao, Kabuntalan, Buayan. Royal houses of Ranau and the Iranuns. For purposes of uh the rotation. Are these individually considered or. Is the royal houses of Magindanao, Kabuntalan, and Buayan. And Iranun considered as one uh group? And then the royal house of Ranau and the royal house of Sulu, thereby making it three? Or are we talking about one, two, three, four, five, six sultanates?
We are talking about four major sultanates, Mister Speaker, based on the provision of the B O L. The mag- sultanates of Magindanao, Kabuntalan, and Buayan all belong to the Sultanet Sultanate of Magindanao, Mister Speaker.
Based on the same provision, Mister Speaker, so. This will own the ro- the traditional leader definition will only be confined to the royal families. So therefore, blood. Is the determining factor to be considered as a Sultan, is that correct?
Yes, in the yes, Mister Speaker.
Along this line, do you think, Mister Speaker, that the. Bangsa Moro Commission for Preservation of Cultural Heritage will have the competency. To do the tracing of genealogy of royal families of the aforementioned sultanates?
Mister Speaker, uh give us a government uh institution mandated. Under section twenty four of the B O L to be created for that purpose, Mister Speaker. I will not question the competence of the B C P C H to do this, Mister Speaker.
I agree uh with the speaker, Mister. Speaker, because the uh unlike other sectors, there is no one in charge and uh perhaps. A law creating an office for the traditional leaders. Just like the law creating the office for settler communities can be made. But in the meantime, we hope that the commission will have that uh uh competency. To address these matters, uh especially considering, Mister Speaker. This might open up conflicts. Because even at present, there are a lot of conflicts going on in Sulu, Magindanao, and Lanau. With uh sultanates declaring uh themselves as Sultan and others competing, we hope that the. Uh uh the commission will be able to address this. On the transitory provision, Mister Speaker. Moving out to the traditional leaders, I'm sure the other members of parliament will be able to to ask the same questions. It states that the ten thousand membership of political parties must have existence in. More than half of all the municipalities, of all the provinces and cities in the Bangsa Moro. And if the elections were to be held in twenty twenty five. That means that we should have political parties by April of next year. Having that kind of ten thousand constituency, will that be feasible, Mister Speaker?
In practical terms, Mister Speaker, if that is going to be how it is if that is. How the electoral code is going to be, um things may have to be may have to happen, Mister Speaker, by then.
Mis- Mister Speaker, on the budget of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office. It states here a reservation that the reserve. That the reserve fund shall not exceed the allocated maintenance and operating expense of the B E O for that election year. Mister Speaker, are we aware of how much the um operating expense of the B of the regional office. Was for last year?
We have no information, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, don't you think it's a dangerous provision that we will limit. An amount to something that we do not still have a factual uh reference, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, the wisdom in putting a uh a cap in that provision, Mister Speaker, is to. Ensure that we do not give more than what the Commission on Elections as a national government agency is willing to give. To the Comelec uh to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office for that particularly year, Mister Speaker, uh and if you look at the pro- provision. Mister Speaker, it is permissive, it uses the words maybe, Mister Speaker.
A or may not.
Mister Spe- Speaker, the word shall was used here and therefore it is mandatory. Mister Speaker, I say this because I have been doing a lot of consultations with Lente. And I had been doing uh focus group discussions with some Comelec uh officials. And I have learned that local government units, cities, provinces. Um have been funding in millions. In cities here in Mindanao. Um they are funding uh up to three million, four million, provinces fund four million. Because what do you fund? You fund for the registration, the continuing registration, the orientation, so um. Clearly, the fact that it is being done already nationwide. States that the influence that we are worried about um. Does not happen because what is supporting is the office and not necessarily the candidate, that's number one. Number two, in fact. Job order contracts nationwide are being provided. Twenty job order contracts per city, ten job order contracts per province. And clearly, this had not influenced the Comelec at all for the past years. Therefore, I'm just worried, Mister Speaker, that we may still be able to empower and strengthen the Comelec. Because as you know, there are a thousand five hundred municipalities and Comelec has a very limited fund. I will just uh propose amendments perhaps in in due time, Mister Speaker. And I'd just like also to express.
On that subject matter.
On that subject matter, and then I'd just like to express reservation on the ten thousand membership requirement. Considering the timeframe again, that by we still have roughly thirteen months to go.
Do you want to discuss that already because you may not have the chance? This is the interpolation.
It's okay.
Because it's in the period of amendments, there will be no discussion anymore, you just propose and formulate your own amendments.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Just for my opinion, Mister Speaker. Implementing or imposing the ten thousand uh constituency for political party. For implementation by April next year. And the B O uh this coming into law in a few months. Might be very limiting i- in practical terms. Mister Speaker, so I hope that the other members can raise that so that uh I will not get more uh time.
Others have reservations on that, so proceed to others other topic.
Mister Speaker, under section nine, in terms of nomination of candidates. We have a provision for uh anti-political dynasty in the electoral code. And it states that. Uh nominees should not be related within second degree of consanguinity and affinity. In practical terms, ang magkapatid, ang mag brother in law. Ang mag uh father in law, ang tatay hindi pwede.
Sa isang regional political.
Sa isang regional political party. Now, it also states that violation of this provision will disqualify one of the nominees. Or it could be many, so. Baka pwedeng lagyan ng one or more of the nominees, and number two. It states determined by the party. How will the parties determine? Baka naman pwedeng ilagay na diretso, toss coin, drawing of lots. Because we cannot review all the the consti and bylaws of all these political parties. Moreover, maybe this provision can be placed under the committee. That is assigned to determine conflicts in terms of uh membership.
Is the question. The the parang anti-dynasty provision.
Yes.
In one polit- regional.
Do we have a clear provision, Mister Speaker? Uh to state who will be disqualified? Because I'm sure the father in law, the father, the brother, the sister. Are all interested, so can we make it a parliament decision to decide. On who gets to be included and who gets to be excluded?
Mister Speaker, that would be um, I think. Uh we would like to promote party autonomy in that sense, Mister Speaker, that will allow parties to determine. Who or how they do it, how they disqualify one or more of the nominees, Mister Speaker. Because if we spell it out in the rules, Mister Speaker, um that will not give uh. The parties liberty to decide or to design their own processes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, uh on that note, perhaps we could also include in the electoral code. Because it is not stated there that those who are nominated. Makes a notarized um. Statement that he is dom- not dominated in any other uh political party.
Can that be proposed as an amendment later on in the period of amendment? Or yeah.
Mister Speaker, I will have to check the contents of the certificate of candidacy, Mister Speaker. And certificate of acceptance because if I recall it correctly, there is a portion there that uh. The the person, the individual has to take. Uh certifying that he or stating that he or she is not nominated in any other party, I think it's in the com- um. Certificate of Acceptance, Mister Speaker. I will have to check, Mister Speaker.
Referring to one nomination only. But uh relatives who will run as nominees. In two different political regional parties allowed.
That's correct, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, as regards the um manner of election of sectoral representatives. We s- we are requiring the voters to determine that they can be part of one sector to three sectors. Mister Speaker, in my dialogue with uh Lente and members of the officials of Comelec. They find this mechanism quite complicated to implement, may I ask, Mister Speaker? Was this issue raised to the Comelec and did they concur as to its implementability wherein. This would require, Mister Speaker, an entire re-registration of the Bangsa Moro populace. The the two million uh registered voters, so they can choose. They are a woman, they are a traditional leader, they are um part of the youth. And how the the ballot would look like. I would like to inquire if this has already the concurrence or a positive uh opinion from the Comelec?
Yes, the short answer is yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, rounding up to the the last uh few points, Mister Speaker. As regards the intra and inter sultanate assembly. Is the principle here, Mister Speaker, in terms of the number of members of uh. For example, when we talk about intra sultanate assembly, can we hear on the concept of that? Are we going to pull in all the, for example, in uh Lanau? Are we going to pull in all the sultans of Lanau? Can we hear it from the speaker?
Yes, uh Mister Speaker, if I may, the intra sultanate assembly. That is envisioned to happen after the um the convention, the royal sultanate convention. Will uh be within a certain geographic uh geographical territory of sultanates, for example. For the Sultanate of Lanau, they will hold or convene an assembly where all of the. Recognized sultans um will attend, so the intra uh sultanate assembly will only. Involve those who belong to the royal houses in a particular territory, Mister Speaker.
The 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 inter is amongst different sultanates in a convention, no? And then the intra is among the same sultanate.
Yes, thank you, Mister Speaker. So when we say the inter conference, is that just the. Four of them individually, the elected ones? Or is that like the convergence of one thousand royal families from Lanau? You know, uh there's a few only in Sulu, maybe two hundred. Is will it be that way or will it be the representatives only of the sultanates that will do the inter? Uh sultanate conference?
So the inter sultanate convention is envisioned to involve all. Of those who are recognized from all of the sultanates that uh are mentioned in the code, Mister Speaker.
We, ma- floor leader, interjection, yung sultanate being used. Are we referring really to the Sultan? Because the Sultanate is the institution.
Yes.
So we refer only to the Sultan?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
So. So we we are looking at a situation where there will be maybe. Five hundred members of the Lanau Sultanate, maybe. Three hundred in uh Magindanao and then maybe fifty in Sulu because. So my question, Mister Speaker, is is that will there be a voter in terms of. The one that gets the most number of votes will be the member of parliament?
Uh no, Mister Speaker, the idea is that during the convention, the sultanates will agree. On who among them will be representing the uh. Traditional leader sectoral representation in parliament, meaning if they decide that this year for the certain term. It's going to be the Sultanate of Sulu, then the ones that will assemble during the intra. Sultanate assembly will only be those who belong to the Sultanate of Sulu and they choose from among the sultanates of Sulu. In that includes Basilan and Tawi Tawi who will represent. So that's the idea, Mister Speaker.
So each sultanate will um choose one?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And then that will do the rotation, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Along this line, Mister Speaker, under uh. The way that we construct laws, it is important that we can analyze. The 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 variables in a law. The concept of traditional leader, Mister Speaker, is there a clear definition from any encyclopedia on earth?
There is none that I know, Mister Speaker.
Okay, that's one, so meaning it is by tradition, it is, there is no encyclopedia, I checked it. Not even Google Scholar, not even uh the other research mechanisms.
Only in the Bangsa Moro.
Only the Bangsa Moro, which we are defining, and number two, Mister Speaker. We have a hybrid justice system, we live in a uh a amidst legal plurality where we have the western laws. We have the Sharia law and we have the traditional laws. Now, on matters of tradition. Now, on matters of traditional law, the best persons to adjust, adjudicate, and determine the variables and and ah framework for that are the traditional leaders, are the elders. Unfortunately, in the present instance, we have given the mandate to the Bangsamoro ah Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage, who were appointed based on determining, you know, um, other cultural aspects of the Bangsamoro. Mister Speaker, don't you think that challenge of them? Because I think i- it is the commission that will facilitate this intra and inter conference, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, the history of including traditional leaders in the sectoral representatives trace traces back to the negotiations and the Bangsamor- and the draft crafting of the Bangsamoro Basic Law and ah later on the Bangsamoro Organic Law. The contemplated situation is that we did, we do not want to um exclude the Sultanates uh in the sense of giving them representation in the parliament, but it cannot be legalized that it can only be the the Sultanates. That's why looking for a better and best term to use in the law, ah, it is traditional leaders. So what is contemplated by law in allowing or giving a seat for sectoral representation to traditional leaders is that they are the the Sultanates.
Mister Speaker, I support that concept. I support our Sultanates and their role they had for our history. I support this concept. I am just worried for the ah Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage. Imagine, the Sultanates will have a intra conference here in this session hall. It is the Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage that will act as ah sergeant-at-arms at the door. They will be the one to say, I'm sorry, you're not a member of the Sultanate. You you have to step out. Of course, they will be the subject of intense anger by the Sultanates. So I hope we can put up a a protective mechanism for that, considering this very complex nature.
Mister Speaker, um, let us not lose sight of the provision of the code that allows or actually tasks the Bangsamoro Electoral Office and ah of the Komelec to monitor. So it is there, ah, not just the BCPCH, just in case. The BEO will also be there to ensure that all the proceedings are ah in order and that they um, that that everybody is followed and, you know, the the monitoring ah, the monitoring task is with the BEO, Mister Speaker. And at the moment, it is the BCPCH that exists as an institution to make sure that this can be operationalized, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. On the last ah questions, Mister Speaker, last few, regarding the election of sectoral representatives, so for twenty twenty-five, it is just organizations that will be um electing among themselves the sectoral representatives for the members of parliament, is that correct?
Mister Speaker, based on section one of the transito- transitory provisions, it should be ah on the basis of election during assemblies called for the purpose by the sectoral organizations, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker. But then, by twenty twenty-eight, except for non-morrow IPs, ulama, and traditional leaders, the women, the youth will will ah have to ah run?
Yes, including the settler, ah settler representatives, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may we get the wisdom of the ah committee on rules why we we had to necessi- necessitate necessitate that ah the non-morrow IPs is exempted, the ulama and the traditional leaders are exempted, but then the settler, the youth, and the women must run in a regional election come twenty twenty-eight?
Mister Speaker, in ah following following the idea of canalizing the provisions of the law and the intents of the provisions thereof, the three um, the three sectoral representatives, the non-morrow IPs, ulama, and the traditional leaders have complications in terms of make of making sure who who gets to vote and who gets to be voted. Whereas the women, the settlers, and the youth have characteristics that are easily discernible by virtue of physical attributes or orientation. So, we um would like for everyone belonging to the women, youth, and ah settler ah sectors to be able to exercise their right to vote, to vote for someone who can represent the sector as it is. Whereas in the NMIP, well, the law, the Bangsamoro Organic Law is ve- very clear on that, saying that ah it is the customary practices and traditions of the IPs, NMIPs that will have to be followed. And the ulama, um, taking into consideration the religious factor of the ulama, that we do not want them to lose that sense of religiosity ah in taking part in politics, et cetera. And then ah the traditional leaders, as I mentioned earlier, that ah there is going to be a challenge in looking for a legitimate list of who who is a Sultan or who is not. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. The ulama was mentioned, and I read in the proposed code that the member of parliament coming from the ulama sector will be apolitical and will have no voting rights. Mister Speaker, um, can we be clarified? How can this be possible? When that member of parliament from the ulama sector will be a member of the committee, will have to decide because it is not a matter of apolitical, Mister Speaker, but a matter of deciding for policy. As members of parliament, our job is to create public policy.
Mister Speaker, um, the good gentleman ah from Sulu may have the old version of the Committee on Rules. Um, I am surprised because he is not a member of the Committee on Rules, but he has that old version, perhaps ah referring to the old version, which is not ah the adopted version in the committee report. So in the committee report, Mister Speaker, that is no longer included, and we adopted the similar approach as the NMIPs and the traditional leaders, Mister Speaker.
So last point, Mister Speaker, I'd like to commend the Committee on Rules and the speaker for defending it well and for being able to do the gargantuan task, almost impossible job of doing the draft ah electoral code.
Maraming salamat sa aking ah kababayan from Sulu for going straight to the point and not going around beating around the bush. So you have saved us much time. Thank you very much. Who's next?
Mister Speaker, the other deputy floor leader um ah went to pray. And ah Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Marjani Makasalong to be the next interpreter.
MP Marjani, Sultan Marjani Makasalong is recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, ah Mister Speaker. Thank you very much, ah Majority Floor Leader. Ah, this is only a clarificatory question, although it was already ah ah brought up by the ah my ah previous colleague who, ah my colleague who previously ah asked questions. Ah, this is regarding the Article Four, Section Thirty-One of the manner of election of traditional leaders, who already clarified who is or who will be part of the rotational basis. And if I'm not, if I got it right, it was ah, or i- it was already ah answered by the floor leader that it is only the or the ah Kabuntalan and ah Buyaan is part of Magindanau, therefore only therefore only four Sultanates, which are Sulu, ah Magindanau, Ranau, and Iranon will be part of the rotational basis. Am I right, Mister Speaker?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
So my ah, my suggestion, Mister Speaker, is that ah if that can be reflected in the in the in the section, ah in the ah in the rotational basis, ah that it will not be the ah definition of the traditional leaders that include the Buyaan at ah the the other Sultanates, but only the four, because that would be the arrangement. And I would rest that, Mister Speaker, and this is only for the record, that during the during due time in the period of amendment, we would like to ah have a language for ah for that amendment, Mister Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Sultan Marjani.
Ah, Mister Speaker, may we also recognize MP Randolph Parcasio?
MP Randolph Parcasio is recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. May the floor leader, um, allow me to profound questions. Thank you. Now, the last ah ah topic that was discussed by Sultan Marjani was about ah rotation of leadership in the traditional leaders. And my question is, ah, Mister Speaker, ah, if we allow rotation of representation in the traditional leaders, is it not also just and proper that we allow ah rotation of representation of um non-morrow IPs in the Bangsamoro Parliament?
Mister Speaker, um, I wish to refer to the I wish to refer to the provision of the Bangsamoro Organic Law, particularly under section seven, Article Seven of um the B O L, that ah on on sec- reserved seats and sectoral representatives. Um, it is mentioned that for NM- saan yung portion ng NMIPs dito? Wait, hold on. Okay, section eight. Ah, notwithstanding the immediately preceding sections, reserved seats for NMIPs shall be based on the following ah customary laws and indigenous processes based on the following. So there are um principles that are enumerated under section eight, Article Seven of the B O L pertaining to the sele- election of reserved seats for non-morrow indigenous peoples, and it talks to customary laws, ah talks about customary laws and indigenous processes. If we legislate on rotation, ah that might touch on the um structures and customary practices that the NMIP observe, Mister Speaker.
Yes, but ah may I ask ah how many non-morrow indigenous ah tribes are there in the, within the territorial jurisdiction of bar?
Mister Speaker, as um provided for in the ah Bangsamoro Organic Law, there are six, Mister Speaker.
Does that, now, I would like to ask the question whether, Mister Speaker, ah, do you agree that ah Badjao tribe is one of the non-morrow IPs in the bar?
Mister Speaker? During the committee ah deliberations on ah this particular issue, Mister Speaker, two schools of thought ah have emerged, Mister Speaker. The first school of thought is that the Badjao the Badjao tribe belongs to the thirteen ethno-linguistic groups of in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau, and that they have um actually ascribed to ah the Mora identity. The second school of thought is that the Badjao's are now ah would like to, now would like to attribute themselves as non-morrow indigenous peoples, ah Mister Speaker, without talking to them and really genuinely getting their sense of whether they are NMIP or not, Mister Speaker, I cannot ah answer that question straightforwardly, Mister Speaker.
After I ask this question, because ah during the ah discussions on the committee level, there were manifestations on the ascribing non-morrow IP identity to the Badjao's. And as such, ah, it is just and proper that ah they should be given ah the chance and opportunity to be represented as non-morrow IP in the in the Bangsamoro Parliament. Now, be that as it may, ah, from among the IP tribes who are non-morrow, is there any assurance that ah ah in the provisions of the proposed ah Bangsamoro Electoral Code that all of them shall be represented or shall have the chance to be represented or send their representatives to the Bangsamoro Parliament?
Mister Speaker?
Any process?
Okay. Mister Speaker, as ah defined in section five of the bill, paragraph G, non-morrow indigenous peoples or NMIP are not only do not only cover the ones that are enumerated in the B O L, but also those such other tribes as may be identified by the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples Affairs. So they they they, we are not foreclosing the opportunity for the Badjao to um make themselves and represent themselves as non-morrow IPs, so much so that they can participate in this exercise, Mister Speaker.
Right. Once that occurs, is there any ah process or any provision in the Bangsamoro ah electoral code that would give them the, that would guarantee them that ah chance to send their representatives in the parliament?
Mister Speaker, in the ah code as it is ah languaged, we have made sure that um ah registration and accreditation by the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples Affairs is ah readily available as a ah mechanism or a means by which a tribe that wishes to be part of the non-morrow IPs could register their ah intention to become that, Mister Speaker, so much so that they can ah participate ah if they wish to, Mister Speaker.
However, as we read the proposed ah electoral code, there is no such provision that would, as you said, ah guarantee a rotation of ah, you know, having representatives in the in the Bangsamoro Parliament. There is none.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize Mister Speaker, MP Ramon Pyang? Ah, Mister Speaker, to respond, may we allow him to respond, Mister Speaker?
Yes, ah MP Pyang can be recognized.
Ah, Mister Speaker?
To expound on on this subject matter.
Yeah, we, at this point in time, we are just following the provisions of the Bangsamoro Organic Law, where it is defined who are those who belongs to the non-morrow indigenous peoples group. So we have five plus the Aromanin Manubu, so we have six. However, if and when, according to the definition of the NMIP at the end of it, that if there's such other tribes who will eventually have the intent of becoming members of the NMIP, then they can become members of the NMIP. At this point in time, we are just implementing the Bangsamoro Organic Law. However, ah, MP Parcasio has already given that during the discussions on the respective committee in the committee, and we have said that it is incumbent within the tribe and within the six groups, eventually, the IPS heads to discuss the mode and the mechanics of rotation. Because already, this is one mode that we should be following, the rotation of the different tribes. However, that is internal to the groups as we have discussed. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, ah.
Thank you, MP Pyang. Ah, back to MP Parcasio.
Mister Speaker, ah, that clearly shows that there is no.
Mister Speaker, uh that clearly shows that there is no provision in the uh, in the proposed code that would uh provide for the rotation of leadership among the non-morrow IPs.
Uh yes, if it is about rotation, Mister Speaker, we affirm that there is nothing in the proposed bill that, in the bill that uh talks about rotation amongst N.M.I.P.s. But if we are asking whether the Badjau can in due time uh apply to be part of the N.M.I.P.s, it is actually uh provided for in the bill, Mister Speaker, particularly section twenty-four of article three, Mister Speaker. There is a created a non-morrow indigenous peoples committee, Mister Speaker, and um they can actually uh participate, Mister Speaker, if they wish to do so.
Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh uh that gives me
May I remind other MPs to please, to please exercise properly the quorum, the interpolation is ongoing. Thank you.
Take the, the, the correct uh frame of mind uh after these uh deliberations to propose an amendment to sections uh twenty, twenty-five to twen- to twen-
Thank you. That is also a high density requirement with the provision states. If a party may manifest, there collective decision to register the party. By undertaking a collective decision, each individual member must have asked to its intent to register the party. Do I get it correctly or because there is in the, in the, there seems to be a confusion of one notification or individual notification? Now, when you talk of manifest, manifest, yeah, collective. Well, there is collective, but the individual must first manifest within party divided. So do I have, uh despite interpretation correct, that before the notification, self-credit individual notification for membership of the party must also secure?
That is not the intention of the provision, Mister Speaker. Um it speaks only, ideally only one of the men. But um during the committee deliberations, we recognize that uh only, not only, not only commissions are only effective in a particular territory. And so uh allowing lists, separate lists per province is uh reasonable, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, my concern is in the process of verification of the names, the registered precincts, and whether they are resident, we usually use for purposes of the commission on election, what we call the index of registered voters. The index of registered voters is part of the record of the uh registration of every precinct. Now, if there is no attestation from each individual, how are we going to be sure that each individual member wants to be part of that collective decision to form a party? That is a concern that I want to raise so that this can be cleared, so that it will not be an issue during registration when political parties are registered because seemingly lawyers have a way of interpreting these provisions differently. Mister Speaker, may I sought the uh interpretation of the good uh floor leader on this?
Mister Speaker, under penalty of perjury or since it is a sworn statement, notarized uh, no less, uh Mister Speaker, the one, the, the party representative who submits the same, Mister Speaker, shall be uh bound by um the duty to, not to make false representations, Mister Speaker. So there are sanctions that await if there are misrepresenta- misrepresentations in the process, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may I know for purposes of record, who will be the party representative who is mandatorily given the opportunity to issue the notarized certification? Is he the party president, the party secretary general, or it should be the council or the board that should certify? Because individually, it might be too heavy for one person to certify a ten thousand list.
Mister Speaker, that is a burden, that is a co- a consequent burden of um joining this political exercise, Mister Speaker, which is to um make sure that what you sign or submit are all true and genuine and authentic and correct, Mister Speaker. As to who should be authorized, I, I think and I submit, Mister Speaker, that it is upon, it is incumbent upon the party, it is the prerogative or discretion of the party as to who to authorize uh to sign and submit, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam uh Pro- Floor Leader. My other question
To be an authorized officer of the party.
Yes. My other question is, there might be a sanction individually for misrepresentation or perjury. You know, perjury goes to the heart of every politician because perjury includes moral perpetuity and need to disqualify any political positions. The question is, is there a consequence for a party for misrepresenting the number of uh registered members? Party consequence, if there is any in the Electoral Code?
You referring to penalty or false claims?
False claims for political party, not for individual members.
Impact on the party?
Yes.
Yes, Mister Speaker, it is uh in fact under section one of article eight, Mister Speaker, under election offenses, that any part, any person, candidate, any candidate, oh, any political party, any officer of a political party who falsely certifies fictitious or inexistent names in the list of its party members, uh shall be um uh a ground for an election offense, Mister Speaker.
Uh the, the answer, Mister Speaker
Shall be
Ground for election offense?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
But is it provided for, do we have provided for penalties, sanctions as o- for election offense in this code?
There is none, Mister Speaker.
That is why, Mister Speaker.
Uh but um under section three, Mister Speaker, um there is actually a penalty, Mister Speaker. Any person found guilty of an election offense shall be punished with imprisonment of not less than one year but not more than six years and shall not be subject to probation, Mister, probation, Mister Speaker.
But that is to the individual person, am I correct?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
But what about Individual candidate?
But what about the political party for misleading the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Office? Is there a sanction?
For the political party?
Yes. Because if there is en- there is none, then I will be proposing for an amendment to
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh as part of a co- of the continuing requirements, Mister Speaker, that um a political party must continue and maintain to have the, the membership and all of the other requirements in the code, Mister Speaker. If it is uh, if found to be non-compliant, Mister Speaker, then the party will have to be delisted, Mister Speaker.
Because, Mister Speaker, from my experience, even for violation of non-submission of um expenditures and collection uh receipts, you are first, for the first offense, you are penalized by fine. But for the second offense, it will become a criminal offense, and therefore you are liable. And a party who are submitting under our general rule can be uh delisted as a political party. Just as a consequence, I would like to add that as a, a, as a money, as a, an enrichment to this proposed code. Now anyway,
Will that be proposed in the period of amendments?
Yes. My manifestation here, reservation is on the number. Mister Speaker, this uh Bangsa-Moro Organic Law is a product of a peace process. And this is also a product of a new law. And therefore, this was ratified with the people in a plebiscite. Collectively, the assumption is this is a people's law. As a people's law, the people voted yes or no with the hope that they can participate in this government. My question for a ten thousand representation here of the number of members, are we not disenfranchising other, uh disallowing other members of our people who voted yes or no in the plebiscite from participating in the government? Thus, creating some cleavage or isolation in the process. This is my concern that I would like to manifest for the record. A ten thousand number of votes would definitely prohibit others or might not be willing to join political numbers, political parties with sizable numbers. This will also limit the process to the already organized either rebel groups or political party or political leaders. But it's allowing those democratically involved, conscious professionals from participating in their government, which they voted under eleven zero five four. My manifestation is, this is inconsistent with the provision of B.O.L., which says that we have given an electoral, we are to drop an electoral code for democratic representation. Democratic representation means as much as possible, many people will be involved so that they can become part of the government of the Bangsa-Moro. Any effort to this, allow them would be, to my mind, anathema to the concept of democratization. Nonetheless, I would put it as a manifestation because I know I in an effort to bring people's participation. I hope the judgment of the committee and the judgment of the parliament is sound, that it will not deny many of our peoples, which will lead to the cleavage of our political institution as the BAR. Because people who are not allowed to participate may say taxation for is taxation without representation is no taxation at all. Participation, participation as a voter without participation in leadership may after all be a denial of total political participation and is anathema to democracy. This is my manifestation in the Rules Committee. I'd just like to put it on record so that if history were judged, I cannot be put to blame for not bringing it into the floor of this parliament. That is my first issue. Thank you. That's the first issue, but I will not be objecting to that provision. But I will just to put it on record because that was my intent in the Rules Committee. Now, I will go to another point.
Will that, the period of amendments also?
Uh I will try, but if it cannot be voted outrightly, then uh this is democracy. Parliament, they vote by majority, but I have
That voice in the wilderness may, may have light, the light may shine on that wilderness.
The second, my second question will boil down to this, Mister Speaker, on the matter of coalition under section seven.
Coalition?
Yes. There is a provision under section seven, which reads this. A coalition composed of a regional political party and a local political party can only field candidates for their elections. My question is, since there is a coalition of a regional political party, a staff proji- political party, who coalists with the local party, denied the privilege to field candidates for the parliament, for the parliament, following this uh provision.
Can you restate, you restate the question?
The, the point is, there would be a ri- coalition between a regional party and a local party. By this provision, it says that that coalition can only field for a local candidate. Am I correct, uh Madam Floor Leader?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
Now, the question is, since this, with this provision, what will happen to that regional party? Is he denied the privilege to field a regional candidate for the parliament?
Mister Speaker, for the regional political party, that po- regional political party can still field candidates for the regional or parliamentary elections.
Or parliament.
But the local party that it has coalisted with
Cannot
Cannot, Mister Speaker.
Field a regional.
Thank you, Madam Floor Leader, that would clarify, but I would propose an amendment to be clear. I would be proposing amendment in the period of amendment because I have a language in here. A coalition composed of a regional a regional party and a local party, huh? Can only for the purpose of local elections and thus field only local candidates.
Yes, yes.
That is the, my language. But anyway, I will propose that in the period of amendment. And the second is on sectoral, on the same item, section seven. On the same, on the same vein, a coalition of a regional party and a sectoral group. The provision also said that they can only field for sectoral representative, the same question. Will the regional party, we denied to field regional political party. I think, I think we will be receiving the same answer, but for purposes of clarity, I will propose an amendment to the language, Mister Speaker. Thank you.
The last issue was, can a sectoral
Regional party
Coalize with a regional political party?
The regional party, yes, Mister Speaker, even if it was
Because they have a wing for that sectoral.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Floor Leader, thank you, Mister Speaker. Now, I will go to a number item which I also made reservation. And it is the matter of the four percent. I want to clear this out so that
Proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
The ten percent reserved for each parliamentary seat.
I know the, the reading of section eight of article seven is that only regional political parties can field candidates, that I think is provided for. And the language of that article also states that it should be, the seats will be proportionate to the votes cast against the total number of votes cast, am I correct? Are received by the party against the total votes cast. Am I correct? In my interpretation of eleven
Twelve votes obtained by the party in relation to the total votes cast. I think that's the premise.
Yes, yes, Mister Speaker.
Having said that, where does four percent sit in that provision? Is four percent proportionate to the votes cast or there is another process? In order to reach a proportional sharing for the party registering more than, more than four percent or less, or perhaps a four percent only? more than four percent or less or perhaps a four percent only? Is there another process, Madam Pro Leader? I just want to be clarified.
The four percent for the additional seats shall be based on the total number of votes of all winning parties, those who have reached the threshold, Mister Speaker. So that is the base um figure for the computation of the uh apportionment of seats, Mister Speaker.
Thank you. So it pertains only to a political party? Under our electoral code, there is also a provision under section seven on coalition, am I correct?
Uh may I uh ask the good gentleman to repeat, Mister Speaker?
Under our electoral code, there is also a provision which would allow coalition of political parties.
That's correct, Mister Speaker.
Now, our four percent was factored in for purposes of one political party.
One regional political.
One regional political party. What, what if there is two or more political parties coming to a coalition? How would be the percentage? Would still be four percent or otherwise?
Yes, Mister Speaker, it does not distinguish. The idea of having a coalition is that the coalition will still uh submit a list of forty, Mister Speaker, and it does does not change the the formula, Mister Speaker.
Now, with respect to four percent, would the threshold?
Percent threshold, will it be higher or lower for the coalition of two political, regional, political parties?
There's no distinction, Mister Speaker, whether it's a single regional party or a coalition, Mister Speaker, it's four percent.
Thank you.
Four percent.
Perhaps that is the intent of the rules committee. I would just like to put for purposes of record and for purposes of history. That I have also learned from my readings and from my consultation that the three pers- that the threshold for political parties outside of our country and many parliaments range from three to four, am I correct? Mister Madam Pro Leader.
Three to seven.
Three to seven, three to seven. And that the four percent was accordingly is a median that you have derived, correct? For purposes of record and clarity.
It is on the low side, Mister Speaker. If you look at three and seven, the median would be five, it the four will be on the lower side, Mister Speaker.
Thank you. But that four percent is still based on one single political party, am I correct?
Uh not not necessarily, Mister Speaker, because again, if it's a coalition, the same rule will apply.
Mister Speaker, mine is uh again to add into this discussion. In many, in other countries, for example, in Malaysia, where you have Sato Versato Rayap of uh Sabah, you have other parties in Sabah, you have in Pinang and other parties, when there is a coalition, there is a higher threshold. But for a coalition, for a non-coalition, there is a lower threshold. Mine only is, in a newly established political entity, it is best to have more political parties. In the course of time, election will prove difficult for these minor parties. But the idea of bringing in political parties at the very beginning is to assure them that everyone is part of the government. And nobody is isolated from that government. But in the course of time, if it be reduced, then we can increase the percentage. So mine is, I would have proposed for a lower percentage of two point five to three percent in the first election, but perhaps growing into four, for individual political parties and for coalition to increase it to five to six. Nonetheless, this is a parliament, but I, as I said, I am here only to enrich the record. And I'd like to, that that would be put into the record, that manifestation. I will not object. I know I was outvoted in the rules and I will be outvoted in this parliament. Nonetheless, I have declared the intent for which I made that reservation very clear. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank, oh thank you sa hugot, uh last statement. But parang waxing sentimental.
And the last, uh the last one is on uh there is a provision for women's party representation. I am a woman. I support women's causes. When I was uh with other government, I am a super, I am a supervising women's project. But for purposes of uh this electoral record, I would be proposing amendment, Mister Speaker, because if I will ask. Under our proposed electoral code, we peg it at thirty percent. May I know the reason why thirty percent should a political party must be women?
Women, women?
Women, yes.
Yes, Mister Speaker, the original uh bill uh provided for ten percent women's participation, Mister Speaker. So this is an increased uh a stark increase from ten percent to thirty percent, Mister Speaker.
Uh the reason perhaps why thirty percent, you move it from ten to thirty, was there convincing persuasive reasoning from our women's group?
Yes, Mister Speaker, um we talked amongst ourselves, Mister Speaker, and uh the consensus uh during that time, Mister Speaker, is to uh peg it at thirty percent, Mister Speaker. Not all of the women in the group, Mister Speaker, the small group, that proposed the relanguaging, Mister Speaker.
Uh attached to that, uh Mister Speaker, I will go to my next question. It's a formula they always include, the zipper formula, am I correct? The the zipper formula. What does that mean? I I read here zipper. Is it still included? Or perhaps I'm reading the old proposal?
I have not seen the zipper here in this.
So the only provision here is thirty percent?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
No zipper formula to be included? Am I correct?
No, none in the, at the moment, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I'll be contented with the thirty percent. I hope uh we will have more women, but uh since that is already the consensus, I will leave it at that. I would rather vote huh? And then for for process of the rules, that's already the consensus, am I correct, Madam Pro Leader? Thirty percent is the consensus of the rules committee?
No, the small group, Mister Speaker, because this is uh a a marked uh increase from ten percent to thirty percent, Mister Speaker.
Uh am I correct in saying that there is still no consensus with the thirty?
That is the approved uh version, Mister Speaker. Some of the members of the Committee on Rules manifested that they uh they reserve, no, their right to comment on the thirty percent. But as it is approved, Mister Speaker, that is how it is worked.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I think I'm uh correct in saying that the rules committee has approved a thirty percent participation of women for the political party.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you. I would not, but I would just like to manifest that I am satisfied with the some of the answer, or I might not agree.
Not all of the answers.
Not the answer, but I would propose it in amendments in the period.
Thank you.
Mister Speaker, thank you.
Thank, thank you, the gentleman from Sulu. Majority Leader.
Uh Mister Speaker, the next to give his interpellation is Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan.
Brother Hatim, Hatimil Hassan, Deputy Speaker is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Well, I think my uh intervention sa ano na sa period amendment na ata, but uh I just like to uh uh intervene tungkol 'yung sa section two, sa article one. Um magproklamata should be the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, hindi ang Bangsa Moro government. Ah pangalawa, 'yung mangmay concern about the equal distribution o the party representatives sa lahat ng probinsyas at saka cities that compose the Bangsa Moro Townhouse Region in Muslim Mindanao. Dahil kami po ay mga maliliit na probinsya, katulad ng Tawitawi, pati Basilan. Kung hindi natin talagang bigyan ng pagkakataon na magayron silang representative, baka ang mangyari wala kami representatives. Sa except, of course, the district representatives. Halimbawa ngayon, halimbawa ngayon, there are only three or four member ng BTA galing sa Tawitawi. There are only four or five galing sa Basilan that are part of the uh Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. Uh kaya sa ngayon pa, at this point in time, kailangan na natin na babigyan sila ng pagkakataon der full participation sa uh gobyerno ng Bangsa Moro, sa regular government o the Bangsa Moro Transition Aut- Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. Uh well, I think this is uh could be uh discussed, superior amendment uh Sabah Bill Number twenty nine. And the other one, uh Mister Speaker, about the definition of traditional leaders. Because it seems that it's limited only to the sultans, to the sultans. Tawitawi, Basilan, the SGA has no Sultanate. So I think it should expand, 'yung tradition, 'yung definition ng traditional leaders to include Maharaja, Panglima, and of course, the leadership of the Moro National Liberation Front and the Moro Islamic Liberation Front. Kasama sila sa traditional leaders na pwede ma- pwet membro ng uh uh Bangsa Moro, ng Bangsa Moro Parliament. Uh well, this are the my concern, uh Mister Speaker, but I would just to reserve this one sa panahon ng period of amendment. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker.
Thank you. The, yes, Mister Speaker, may we request that uh the proposed language on amendments be submitted, Mister Speaker, because during the period of amendments, there will be no more deliberations.
Possibly tonight, if possible.
Mister Speaker, thank you. So I gathered uh three items from the statement of the Honorable Deputy Speaker, sir. Uh in section two of article one about the mention of Bangsa Moro government, he proposes to make it Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, about the forty seats to be apportioned uh geographical, according to geographical representation, Mister Speaker, and the traditional leaders. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Noted po.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Hatim, Hatimil Hassan. Majority Leader, who's next? Next in line, not.
Yes, Mister Speaker, the next to ask her questions uh is MP Ambatuan.
MP Bayintan Ambatuan, lady from Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um ipilitin ko pong ilimanize 'yung aking mga um reservation. Uh just for the record, uh I am a member of the Committee on Rules, but uh I have uh reservations on four major topics. And um upon reading the final or the cleanse copy of of the document upon um something, pero imamanipas ko na lang. Okay, um doon na muna tayo sa usapin ng kababaihan. Uh I I know that this is uh very interesting to to all of us, not just the women, but all of us, men and women. Um nabanggit po kanina na um thirty percent, and in fact, in the report, it's thirty percent. Um nakwenta pa ba natin? Mad, uh Mister Speaker, kung ano ang equivalent ng sinasabi nilang thirty percent? Ilan po, ilang pong seats ang equivalent ng thirty percent? Uh Mister Speaker.
Mis- Mister Speaker, uh thirty percent of forty is twelve, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Matanong ko lang po ang um ating proponent, Mister Speaker, sa kasalukuyang member ng parliament. Ilan po 'yung mga babae, kababaihan na nakaupo na na member na parliament, uh Mister Speaker?
The present?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Present composition of BTA two.
Mister Speaker, kung, I hope wala po akong mamis, sixteen po, Mister Speaker. Sa makatuwid, Mister Speaker, 'yung pinopropos po natin na thirty percent, which is equivalent to twelve seats, Mister Speaker, ay mas maliit, mas maliit pa sa nap- sa nap- na meron na tayo sa ngayon, Mister Speaker. Tama po ba ako, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, tama po. It's simple mathematical calculation. Uh tama po yun. Subalit, Mister Speaker, nakasulat po na at least, Mister Speaker. Hindi po natin sinasabi na hanggang twelve lang, Mister Speaker. Kung ang party na nanalo ay lahat na binigay nila na uh nomination nominees ay babae, Mister Speaker, there are chance, there's a big, big chance na mas more than twelve, Mister Speaker. It is at least.
Tama po yun, Mister Speaker. Yan po ay aspiration, pangarap po nating lahat na sana mas mataas pa sa labing dalawa na seats, Mister Speaker. Pero, Mister Speaker, ang isang katanungan, malaking katanungan, Mister Speaker, napapaloob dito sa final cleanse copy ng ating report, Mister Speaker, wala namang assurance na kahit nilagay mo dyan na thirty percent, 'yung nominees ng isang political party, makakaupo 'yung twelve o 'yung thirty percent. Wala pong nakalagay dyan, Mister Speaker. So, sa makatuwid, Mister Speaker, baka ang mangyayari na ito, isang reserved seat lang ang makakaupo, Mister Speaker, dahil may isang reserved seat lang ang kababaihan, Mister Speaker. At ang magandang provision na dito sa MNNIP, sa dalawang seats na meron sila, ibinigay nila sa kababaihan 'yung isang seat. So sa makatuwid, meron tayong dalawa, no? Pag naaprobitong batas na ito, dalawa lang 'yung dalawa lang ang ang tutuong, dalawa lang po ang tutuo. 'Yung tutuong-tutoo, Mister Speaker. Yun po ang katotohanan, Mister Speaker, at ako ay nalulungkot.
Ang tutuong babae.
Bahala na, Mister Speaker, basta 'yung opohan ay para sa kababaihan, Mister Speaker. Pero ako po ay nalulungkot dahil sa makatuwid, sa sixteen seats na meron tayo ngayon, 'yung ating panokala ay mas maliit pa, at ang assured seat ay dalawa lang po. Napakasakit. Diba, Mister Speaker? So, in due time, Mister Speaker, I will propose my amendment and in fact, I have already submitted my proposed amendment in the Committee of Rules, Mister Speaker. And I'm, I'm trying to raise up to eleven of fifty percent, Mister Speaker, just for the record, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, for the record, Mister Speaker, I I hope that it does not villainize other members of the parliament who are women, um in the, in the sense na hindi rin po namin gusto. Uh I think, Mister Speaker, it is a common uh uh ano yun, common advocacy of all members of the parliament. Uh all women, no? Uh to to raise, uh to increase the women's participation, Mister Speaker. But we have to look at also the provision of the law that says at least a thirty percent, which means that we are not limiting it to thirty percent, number one. Number two, Mister Speaker, we have um also provided for uh non-Moro IP uh sectoral representatives to at least have, I mean, make sure that one of them would be a woman. And the the district representatives will also most likely have uh women in representation, Mister Speaker. Uh in addition, Mister Speaker.
Not limited to the sectoral?
Yes, Mister Speaker. Um MP Eddie Ali would like to speak also, Mister Speaker.
Women, all women?
Oh, uh we, men supporting women's concern.
Yes, mga honorary women.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you. You are recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Speaker. Unang-unah po, when uh Parliamentary Bill Number twenty nine was uh filed. As earlier mentioned by our Majority Pro Leader, Mister Speaker, nagsimula po tayo, ten percent po ang proposal. Nang tayo po ay u- ay umikot, nagkakaroon po tayo ng public consultation. Ang Committee on Rules increase the women participation, uh thirty percent of forty, no? At least, ang sinabi natin dito sa batas, at least forty percent, at least thirty percent po. Hindi pong nanghulugan na dito lang po sa party representation ang mga kababaihan. Pagdating po sa parliamentary district, pagdating po Pagdating po sa parliamentary district, pagdating po sa reserved seats, meron pa rin po yan mga kababaihan. I just would like to emphasize, Mr. Speaker, the United States being the father of democracy. Sa kanila po, ang pinakamataas na sa House of Representatives was in twenty eighteen, mid-election. Ilan lang po ang mga kababaihan? It was only twenty-three, twenty-three point five percent. The global, Mr. Speaker, the global average of women representation in Parliament is twenty-four point one percent. Mr. Speaker, dito po sa ating batas, proposed Parliamentary Bill Number Twenty-Nine, at least thirty percent po ang ating, uh, sinasabi dito. It is even very much higher, Mr. Speaker, sa women, sa global average of women representation in Parliament. Ako po ay, ay, kagaya ni Sister MP, Mr. Speaker, uh, Bayintan, uh, nagpapahalaga din po, at saka gustong-gusto po natin, na malaki ang representation. Nung tayo'y umiikot, in consideration also of some cultural, you know, uh, considerations, eh, tinitingnan natin napakababa po ng ten percent, kaya inactit po natin ng, ng thirty percent. Mr. Speaker, yun po ay at least thirty percent po. But we still give it to the, to the party. Na pwede po yan maging fifty percent, pwede po yan, kung gusto lang partido na puro babae, ang forty, ang, ang apat na pong, um, representative sang partido. I think in the exercise of democratic process, Mr. Speaker, bibigyan din po natin ng democratic space ang partido. Tayo po, yung paglalagay po natin ng at least thirty percent na kababaihan, is only a guide na sana ang mga, ang lahat ng partido ay hindi bababa po doon sa forty percent, Mr. Speaker. Kaya, ito para sa akin, uh, I have some ano, may mga ibang countries na medyo tumaa sa thirty percent. But these are already matured, uh, democratic countries, Mr. Speaker. Ang masasabi ko lang po, ang, ang linagay ng, ng Committee on Rules to have at least thirty percent, gusto ko pong uli- ulitin, Mr. Speaker, is higher than the, than the global average of women participation in the parliamentary speaker.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, gusto ko pong ipaliwanag, Mr. Speaker, taing sinasabi nating at least thirty percent doesn't actually assure us of twelve seats, Mr. Speaker. Paano? At bakit? Um, Mr. Speaker, doon po sa paglagay natin ng nominees na forty, Mr. Speaker, hindi tayo sigurado na yung top ten, for example, ay puro babae. Baka yung, yung top boto, ay yung bottom na ten, yun yung mga babae. And that is equivalent to thirty percent. So, Mr. Speaker, kahit fifty pa ilagay mo dyan, at least fifty percent, pero hindi mo sinabing zipper yan. Walang assurance kasi hindi sigurado yung forty mananalo sa kanila, no? Yung political party, hindi naman sigurado makukuha niya lahat yung forty. For example, sampu lang yung makuha niya na slots, na seats, ay yung sampuro, pulor, puro lalaki. So walang sigurado dito na mapupunta sa kababaihan yung thirty percent, that doesn't assure us, Mr. Speaker, of the thirty percent. Mr. Speaker, siguradong-sigurado ako, kung ang provision ng batas ay according sa nakasulat ngayon, hindi makakaupo ng, ng twelve, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, inversely, inversely, Mr. Speaker, pwede po magiging speculative lang po tayo, no? If the question is speculative, I will answer also with speculative answer. Pwede rin po inversely, Mr. Speaker, yung partido, puro kababaihan ang nasataas. Kasi pag ang sinasabi natin, hindi tayo sigurado, eh, pwede po babae ang nasataas lahat, pwede rin po sa baba. Pero para sa akin po dito, ang sinasabi natin of principled political party, Mr. Speaker, pag sinabi po ng batas na at least thirty percent ay kababaihan, kung ikaw po ay may prinsipyo na partido, Mr. Speaker, siempre, bibigyan mo rin po ng, uh, ng, ng, ng babaeng nominees doon sa taas. Eh, kagaya ng sinabi ko, speculative question, I will answer with speculative answer. Eh, pwede rin po, Mr. Speaker, puro ano, puro babae ang nasataas. Hindi natin alam, nasa partido po yun. At, uh, ang sinasabi natin dito, Mr. Speaker, these are guides, no? Itong batas na to, itong Parliamentary Bill, uh, Number Twenty-Nine, ay, ay, magiging guide para sa mga partido. Pero, nasa partido rin po yun. No? Hindi man tayo sigurado, pero who knows? Eh, baka ang gusto nila, puro babae ang top twenty, para, para babae naman, eh, lalaki naman ang, ang next twenty para sa baba. So ganun lang po yun.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Kung mag-speculate man lang tayo, yun doon tayo sa medyo realistic, Mr. Speaker. But I will not argue, argue anymore, Mr. Speaker. I profound my, uh, my piece about the, the women and in due time, in the period of amendments, I will propose for amendment, Mr. Speaker. I'll move on to the other concern, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Dito po tayo sa...
See, Floor Leader? Uh, the sponsor? Chairman of the Committee on Rules?
Dito po tayo sa usapin ng sampung libo, Mr. Speaker. Um, I joined the manifestation earlier of MP Jolorena as to the, um, democratic and, uh, ensuring that, uh, not only those who are holding, uh, the power and the resources right now would be able, would have the chance to, to be in the Parliament, in the next Parliament. But, Mr. Speaker, uh, I would ask some question uh, with regards to the technical, um, technical considerations of why we choose the, the, the number ten thousand and it's not twenty thousand, it's not thirty thousand, it's not fifty thousand, nor it's not one thousand, Mr. Speaker. What's the rationale behind the ten thousand, Mr. Speaker?
Sponsor, may answer?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, let's not lose sight of the other requirement, not just the ten thousand, but also the geographic, uh, uh, presence, no? Geographical presence that is required under the code, no? The ten thousand, um, is, uh, seen to be, uh, something that would make sure that the gen- the political parties are not fly by night, no? It's, uh, that the political parties that would have to, would have to make sure that they, um, uh, gather enough, uh, number of membership so, so that that, uh, the genuinely principled political party that is promoted and encouraged under the Bangsamoro Organic Law is observed, Mr. Speaker. Um, as to why it's not one thousand, two thousand, Mr. Speaker, again, uh, we look at the, uh, a political membership base, Mr. Speaker, as something that would truly represent the ideals and, um, platform of government of the political party, Mr. Speaker.
Again, Mr. Speaker, um, bawat kasi numero sana na inilalagay natin sa isang batas, may basihan po tayo. And that's actually, um, very basic, no? Very basic na, kung naglagay ka dyan ng isang libo, ang basihan ko ay dahil, um, based on a study, or based on a research, or based on a competition, ito yung nadirive namin. Pero hindi ko po nakikita yung derivation of the ten thousand figure, Mr. Speaker. And that's why I am not convinced na ito yung ten thousand na magsasabihin na we can produce a very strong political party. Dahil wala tayong basihan, walang research, wala man lang, um, masasabi nating, ako kung i-explain ko ito, no? Pilitin niyo ako i-explain, baka pwede ko pang i-justify yung ten thousand, no, Mr. Speaker? Uh, pero, I, I know that there is rational behind the ten thousand, Mr. Speaker. I want to really know, what's the rational behind the ten thousand? Because if I am not convinced about the rational, I might not support this specific provision, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker?
Majority Leader, the, the dispenser, the answer?
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, uh, I am, uh, I'm happy to know what, uh, how, how, um, the good, uh, lady would argue, because she said that if pipilitin po siya, ay, kaya niya pong i-explain, on the part of, uh, the drafters of the bill, Mr. Speaker, the ten thousand is based on the number of registered voters. We have over two million registered voters in the barm alone, Mr. Speaker. And the ten thousand, uh, membership requirement is a reasonable number to, to make sure that there is a strong following, Mr. Speaker, and make sure that, again, no, hindi nga po siya, uh, uh, just a political party that's going to be used by those who are already in power, those who have, um, bailiwicks elsewhere, Mr. Speaker. So the ten thousand, um, is a reasonable number based on the more than two million voters in the bar, Mr. Speaker.
Um, again, Mr. Speaker, yung using the word reasonable doesn't justify anything, because wala tayong formula, Mr. Speaker. And I will not argue anymore. If you will press me, I have a formula for it, Mr. Speaker, but I reserve that formula, because I do not, I do not support the ten thousand. I am pro for, for small number, which will allow the small organization to thrive. Remember, bago lang po tayo, ngayon lang po mag-i-election sa Bangsamoro, no? Kung nag-set na tayo ng napakataas na standard, eh, baka yung standard lang ng nakakataas yung masaserve natin. Yung mga maliliit, baka hindi natin masaserve, Mr. Speaker. Yun po yung aking worry dito sa ten thousand, Mr. Speaker. But much have been said about the ten thousand, Mr. Speaker.
But if you are requested, interjection, but if you are requested to present a formula on a certain number of your proposal, will you accede to that and for study of the rules?
Um, Mr. Speaker, um, subject po yan, because hindi ko po sinusuportahan yung ano, nung yung ten thousand. But I can, I can give a formula, why it's ten thousand, Mr. Speaker?
Ah, why it's ten thousand?
I sample ko lang po, kasi baka naglagay tayo...
Akala ko you will give a formula on a lesser number than ten thousand.
Give a lesser formula, uh, formula for lesser number, Mr. Speaker, if you want, Mr. Speaker. But, uh, I, I guess, uh, much have been talk about the ten thousand, but be it on record that I am not pro for the ten thousand, Mr. Speaker. I'm pro poor, I'm pro small organization, Mr. Speaker.
Well, well said.
I move to the third reservation of mine, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
With the four percent cap, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, turn out for twenty-eight of article? Panakuha yung article, article? Three? Yes. So, again, Mr. Speaker, um, medyo mahaba rin yung discussion dito sa four percent, pero kung ang basihan natin ay maraming mahingay na, I think wala lang nakikinig.
Ah, makinig po tayo, mga colleagues, MPs. May I call on the honorable gentleman to please listen?
Lagi po, malapit na po akong matapos.
Di ka naririnig?
Malapit na akong matapos, Mr. Speaker. Doon po sa four percent, Mr. Speaker. Um, again, um, and this was explained to me, but again, if we compare it to the existing, napakataas po yung, yung, yung cap na binigay natin, at uulitin ko yung concern, tayo po ay nagsisimula pa lamang. Nag-experiment pa tayo kung ano yung tama at tamang akmang-akma para sa atin. Putting a higher cap, Mr. Speaker, will actually give us too high standard, Mr. Speaker. So baka kumataas masyadong standard mo, ah, may tendency tayong mahulog, no? Pero kung nagsimula ka sa baba, pataas, yun may progression, Mr. Speaker. So ganun po kasimple yung aking pananaw dito, Mr. Speaker. Kung kaya, dito sa particular provision na ito, ay may, may, um, um, proposed amendment po ako, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And my last point?
Yes, proceed to, proceed to the last point.
Second to the last pala, may hirit.
Second to the last.
Mr. Speaker, sa usapin ng parliamentary seats, dyan po sa ating cleanse copy, Mr. Speaker, ang ginawa po natin ay kinapi-face lang po natin kung ano ang nakasulat sa BOL. Nakakalungkot, diba? Kasi we have all the opportunities to, to, to say something about the parliamentary districts, Mr. Speaker. And in fact, I have my own wording about it, and I give due respect to the result of the consultations that happened. For example, in the case of Cotabato City, they, they, um, explicitly, uh, propose that they want three seats, Mr. Speaker. In the case of Cotabato City, and I so fully support that, Mr. Speaker. My formula for this distribution of seats, Mr. Speaker, is this, Mr. Speaker. Right now, we have eight congressional districts with three seats per congre- congre- uh, congressional district. That means to say, eight times three equals twenty-four, right? And right now, eight times three equals twenty-four. And right now, we have three cities, Mr. Speaker. The city of Lamitan with more than one hundred population, the city of Marawi with more than two hundred population, and the city of Cotabato with more than three hundred population. That corresponds, Mr. Speaker, if I use the population formula of, Mr. Speaker, for Cotabato City will have three seats, for Marawi City will have two seats, and for Lamitan City will have one seat. What will happen to the SGA, Mr. Speaker? The SGA has more than two hundred population, and that's corresponding to two seats. If you add up all these seats, Mr. Speaker, that would correspond to thirty-two seats, Mr. Speaker. By putting that provision, it would assure that that distribution will be given to the particular provinces and cities and the special geographic area. It's a one-section provision that would assure, that would assure the current congressional, the, uh, the congressional district and in recognition to our cities and the special geographic areas, Mr. Speaker. That's my formula, Miss, Mr. Speaker, for this particular, um, provision. And I want to put it, I want to include it in the Electoral Code, Mr. Speaker. Just for the record, Mr. Speaker. My last concern, Mr. Speaker, and this is more of when I read the, the cleanse copy. Um, Mr. Speaker, in it's, I, I have actually few, few, bigay ko na lang yung notes ko, but this one is glaring. Patantago yung aking ano, notes. Okay, um, in, in the cleanse copy, Mr. Speaker, we use the term BEO, we use the term comelec, we use the term comelec in bang, we use the term comelec BEO, and we use the term commission and bang. But, but some of them have referring to the same entity. Um, my proposal is we will amend i- in the period of amendments, because this will confuse us, no? Uh, impact lima kasi eh. So, uh, other than that, I have also other proposed amendments, which I want... which I want to um, give later on. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam, uh, MP Bayan Tanang Patuan. Ma- matindi talaga pagbabae sa babae.
Like to ask his questions, Mister Speaker, is MP Jet Lim.
Ah, idol. 'Yan, 'yan si MP Attorney Jet Lim from Sulu and Tawi-Tawi.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
You are recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillah, Rakman, Rahim. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi taala wabarokatuh. So the speaker as well as the esteemed colleagues in the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, uh, before anything else, I will share to you two learns, uh, two lessons, no? In today's uh, plenary session.
Can we, can we exercise proper decorum? Can we ask you to be silent, please, and avoid going around? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Madali na akong maalis dito sa presiding. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speakers.
All ears.
Mister Speaker, as I said, there are two lessons I learned, no, in this uh, proceeding. First, always interpolate first unless you enjoy the agony of waiting. That's one. Number two, never interpolate after the esteemed colleague Attorney Chor Lore- Lore- Lorena. Otherwise, in his wisdom, brilliance, and eloquence, he will be missed in the wilderness. Now, Mister Speaker, allow me to reclaim and redeem myself outside this wilderness that Mister, uh, the esteemed colleague MP Lorena has put us in. Madam, uh, Mister Speaker. At the, at the outset, I would like to manifest that I am a member of the Committee on Rules and therefore, mo- most of my comments have been incorporated uh, in the committee report. And to this, I thank my uh, colleagues in the committee. Second, uh, uh, few comment that I wanted to share, no? Will the floor leader agree with me that there are three modes of joining the members of the parliament pertaining to Article Four of the proposed B T A twenty-nine?
The sections Article Four.
Article Four.
Section.
The, no, the, in general, Article Four, Mister Speaker.
Yes.
The first mode, uh, being the forty percent, uh, the fifty percent which represents forty seats in the parliament.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Will the floor leader agree with me that the second mode would be the parliamentary district representatives which represent around forty percent or thirty-two seats in the parliament?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And finally, the third mode of uh, entering the uh, parliament is the ten percent seats, no?
Equivalent to eight seats.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Uh, my apology to the members of the committee, no, if I sound reden- redundant. This point, I have been uh, uh, pushing on in the committee hearings, no? But before going on, no, na- napansin ko lang. I, I miss everyone, no, in the plenary session because for the past weeks, ingkasama ko po, 'yung mga tagacommittee, nakasawa rin pala, no? So, anyway. Nakakamiss pala. So, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mister Speaker, earlier today, the floor leaders uh, mentioned that um, in the party representation seat, it is the party who is the candidate to the election, correct?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Whereas, uh, Mister Speaker, in the parliamentary district seat, it is either the party or the individual, uh, the, it is the individual who is either a member of the party or by himself the candidate.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And finally, in the sectoral, we have already provided. Will the floor leader then agree with me that in the second mode of entering the parliament, independent candidate may be allowed?
In the district?
In the parliamentary district.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Madam Floor Leader. Will the floor leader agree with me also that in the original bill, Bill Number Twenty-nine, the definition of a candi- of an independent is already, is mentioned in the original bill, language of the Bill Twenty-nine?
Mister Speaker, the, since uh, we are no longer referring to the uh, bill as filed uh, and now we are interpolating on the provisions of the committee report approved bill, Mister Speaker, I, I, I would like to refrain from answering that question, Mister Speaker.
I know, it's just a matter of fa- fact. Anyway, if the floor leader would not agree, uh, Bill Twenty-nine as originally, as originally filed, uh, mentions uh, the definition on independent candidate. And in the subsequent sections of the Bill Twenty-nine, the consequences and the effects of uh, for instance, vacancies succession are also mentioned in the original bill. Anyway, since uh, the floor leader already agreed uh, with the position that independent candidate can run in the second mode of entering the uh, parliament, I manifest uh, when in due time, when the time for amendment comes, uh, I would like to propose uh, uh, a language, in fact, uh, reinstating the original uh, and improve uh, definition of independent candidate. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, thank you, and I congratulate you for the uh, beauty, uh, wonderful stewardship of this uh, parliament. Maraming salamat po. Assalamualaikum warakmatullahi taala wabarokatuh.
Thank you, thank you. Next, floor leader.
Next to ask his questions, Mister Speaker is MP Mawalin.
'Yan, 'yan. Let us welcome the next interpolator with complete silence.
Thank you, Mister, my speaker, the gentleman from the House of Mayimbong. Uh, I was told and advised to make my questions concise and straight to the point. And for the love of Bangsa Moro, for the love of my fellow parliament members, I will abide by the rules. Um, my, my first question, uh, Mister Speaker is a general question. Since this code in my four years in as member of this parliament, this is the most important for me, for important code that we are to enact. And we have to go back to the foundation of why we are doing this. My first question, Mister Speaker, is, uh, is the proponent or do you believe that the proposed Bangsa Moro Electoral Code is consistent with the Bangsa Moro Organic Law?
Mister Speaker, to the best of my knowledge, Mister Speaker, uh, yes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, earlier, uh, pro- some provision, important provisions of this proposed code have been cited. In particular, I will have to cite the ten thousand membership required for the political party. Now, my question is, is the ten thousand membership required for the political party sanctioned by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law? Is there a provision in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law that sets this number as a requirement for the uh, registration of political party?
There is none, Mister Speaker, and there is also no prohibition to setting such uh, number, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, may we know the motivation behind? The, because I am not part of the, obviously, I'm not a part of the Committee on Rules, as to why we manage to, why we decided to go with a uh, minimum ten thousand membership requirement?
Mister Speaker, that uh, this uh, this proponent has already answered and responded to the similar question earlier raised by uh, uh, as uh, a dear colleague in the parliament, Mister Speaker. If uh, I may restate the answer, Mister Speaker, it is to make sure um, that the registered political pa- registered regional political parties enjoy a strong base of support and uh, that there are no, that we encourage the formation of genuinely pri- principled political parties and there are no fly-by-night um, uh, parties, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I just have some readings about some uh, issues that were thrown out against the Bangsa Moro, the proposed Bangsa Moro Electoral Code. But I, the re- reason why I asked the question of with, if it's within the framework of the B O L is because I, I will have to read the section four, Article Four of the B O L which uh, provides the Bangsa Moro government shall adopt an electoral system which shall be consistent with the national election laws, allow democratic participation, encourage the formulation of genuinely principled political parties. I will have to emphasize the word democratic process. By, some calls it as a restrictive provision, the ten thousand membership uh, uh, requirement set by the proposed electoral code. Do you believe that we are reinforcing the idea of democratic participation, democratic exercise by putting a cap, a minimum requirement for groups to register as a political party, a cap of twenty, a ten thousand membership?
Mister Speaker, if we, um, if the question is simply couched as, do I think it is democratic, Mister Speaker? That is something that is subjective, Mister Speaker. Democracy can mean many things to many people, Mister Speaker.
Thank you for that uh, answer, uh, Mister Speaker. My next question, I've understand that the previous interpolators also mentioned the four percent threshold. And I'd like to go back to my earlier question, if the, this proposed code is within the framework of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. Again, Mister Speaker, um, is the four percent threshold sanctioned by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law?
Uh, similar to the earlier answer, Mister Speaker, it is not provided for nor is it, nor is it prohibited, Mister Speaker.
So there is nowhere in the B O L that the, the, that it, it, it sets a four percent threshold for the political parties?
Straight answer, there's none, Mister Speaker.
Thank you for that, uh, Mister Speaker. Uh, I'd like to go to the section on the uh, sectoral representatives. I have understand that we'd make, we'd made an exemption on the uh, election of the sectoral party except for the indigenous people, nine moral indigenous peoples, the traditional, and the ulama. Uh, the rest will be elected through an election. Mister Speaker, uh, it is also indicated that the uh, groups that are to participate in the uh, election will be accredited by the corresponding offices. For example, the Bangsa Moro Youth of uh, Commission, the Bangsa Moro Women Commission, the nation, the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples, the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples, the MIPA. Um, Mister Speaker, I'd like to put this in koan. Kasi with, with, when, when we enacted itong mga charters ng mga offices na'to, wala naman sa intent natin na magpa-participate because certi- certification is a major function siguro, in this case, na kailangan gawin ng office, ng mga office na'to. And in the deliberation of the three commissions, the, 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 the two commissions, the youth and women, hindi natin in-anticipate na magiging part sila, indirectly part ng election. I, I say indirectly because sila 'yung mag-sacertify. Certification ang sinabi dito. Are we, in effect, amending the mandate of these commissions by citing them in this electoral code?
Uh, Mister Speaker, I don't think that this is amending, um, in principle, Mister Speaker, we are adding or tasking them, uh, designating them, uh, a task, Mister Speaker.
This is an additional task, Mister Speaker.
Correct, Mister Speaker.
So therefore, this also requires budgetary requirements. We will have to consider in the appropriation of these agencies or perhaps if we're going to ef- to, to implement this, uh, this, this, this code as soon as possible, we will have to augment, supplement their existing budget because this is a huge responsibility that they are to uh, perform, Mister Speaker.
As a necessary consequence of the additional task, Mister Speaker, uh, the answer is in the affirmative, Mister Speaker.
If we are going to appropriate additional funding for these offices, are we, in effect, amending their mandate?
No, Mister Speaker.
That's for the record, Mister Speaker. So, um, do you be um, taking this in, these offices into a perform election-related function, make them a political, some sort of a political office?
Uh, Mister Speaker, I beg to disagree that this is election-related, Mister Speaker. The process of certifying them as members of a particular sector or group are germane to what the, the appropriate ministry or office uh, is doing already, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, are we, do you agree that the incumbent uh, officers, the commissioners, the chairpersons of these offices, or even the Ministry of Indigenous Peoples were appointed by the chief minister?
That's correct. Yes, Mister Speaker.
So in this case, they are political appointees, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, um, I would like to qualify my answer because commissions have fixed terms, Mister Speaker. Therefore, they do not qualify as a political appointees.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, we've said in this proposed draft that the groups are required to be certified by these offices. But we, I do not see any guidelines or mechanism to ensure uh, that there is a procedural and substantive due process. Speaker, if I am a youth organization, a youth groups that uh, that wa- wants to be certified by the Bangsa Moro Youth Commission, how are we going to, to ensure that the, this office, this commission will be independent, will be devoid of partisanship?
Mister Speaker, the last portion of Section Eighteen, uh, I thi- think this is what the, what the good gentleman is referring to. The last paragraph, um, requires the promulgation of guidelines, Mister Speaker, uh, copies of which shall be furnished to the parliament, Mister Speaker.
And what is the rule of the, the comelec on this guidelines, Mister Speaker?
There is none, Mister Speaker.
So it is just the parliament, Mister Speaker?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I think the previous interpolash- interpolator mentioned about the uh, independent candidate. Just to be clear, Mister Speaker, uh, that candidates who want to run in the parliament, uh, in the district need not to be a member of any political party?
That is a, yes, th- that is correct.
That is correct, Mister Speaker. And Mister Speaker, uh, how do we make sure that the minimum, we have managed to amend the provision on women participation or representation to thirty percent, I understand?
Uh, may, uh, I ask the gentleman to repeat?
Yeah, the, you discussed earlier about the thirty percent uh, for the representation of women in the parliament. What is our goal in, 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 in po- what is the basis of the thirty percent? What is our goal in, 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 what is the basis of the thirty percent?
As I mentioned earlier, uh during, in the previous bill, it was ten percent. And uh raising it to thirty percent um makes sure that there is uh an improvement or progress, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. But although my, our proposal actually is a zipper approach and and we would like to reiterate that uh position. Uh, section six, Mister Speaker, talks about the election of party members. Uh, and may I quote, the election of the po- members of the different bodies or mechanism in the previous section must be conducted through secret ballot. An ad hoc body may be created periodically to administer the election process. Which body shall ensure the sanctity of the election? I did not find any provision as to the power of the uh officers in the party. Uh, is it possible that we ensure the representation of women and youth in the roster of officers in this party, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, uh if the, during the period of amendments, if the gentleman would like to propose a language that would be uh welcome, Mister Speaker.
That's great. And thank you, Mister Speaker. As I've said, I've committed to make this interpolation concise and direct to the point. Thank you, Mister Speaker. For the love of the Bangsamoro, thank you.
Very good interpolation, very short, concise and direct. So, thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mister Speaker, the next to uh ask her questions is Deputy Speaker, Attorney Laisa Alamiya.
Deputy Speaker Laisa Alamiya of Basilan is recognized. Happy birthday. Happy Women's Month.
Salamulay kumurah matulaya barakatu. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker, uh Madam Floor Leader, Acting Floor Leader. And the original floor leader, uh and the proponent. So, Mister Speaker, I was supposed to be the first interpolator, but the fake uh floor leader saw saw this, Mister Speaker, and she thought that uh I would have a lot of questions based on this. This is, uh these are my proposed uh amendments. However, Mister Speaker, I would like to uh, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate and thereby congratulate the Committee on Rules led by the floor, the real floor leader. Because most of the issues that uh I was about to raise here, based on the original uh B T A Bill number twenty-nine, have already been responded to and are now incorporated uh in the current version of the electoral code. So, thank you very much. Okay, so.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. So I'm not a politician, Mister Speaker. Um, I used to be an election lawyer, and so I would go straight to the point and uh discuss and uh interpolate with respect to specific provisions on election. The first uh question, uh Mister Speaker, for the record, because I raised this at the committee level, um, is there a provision, just for the record and for the knowledge of everyone listening to us? Is there a provision in the current version of the electoral code that pertained to controversies that may arise? Because this was raised by earlier inter- interpolators, that may arise from the selection process or election process of the sectoral representatives like the ulama, the Sultanate or the traditional leaders, and even the other sectoral groups like the settlers and the I P. Uh, for the record, if there are controversies that may arise from that, if I am, for example, just to give an example, I am, uh, I purport to be a part of the Sultanate of Sulu, okay, for example. But I am not happy, or I do not agree with the selection or election of the representative of the Sultanate, for example, either intra, intra Sultanate or inter Sultanate during the convention. Is there a remedy for me if I would like to question this? So it is an election controversy, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, uh, the, a pro- the relevant provision in the current uh bill, Mister Speaker, is under section thirty-six of Article four, uh pertaining to opposition, which is a common provision to all, um sectoral representatives who will not be elected by popular vote, Mister Speaker.
So there is, may we hear what is that specific provision, uh Mister Speaker?
If I may read aloud, section thirty-six, opposition, oppositions to the manner of election of sectoral representatives and/or the qualifications of the candidates therein shall be filed with a comelec within fifteen days from the respective election, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. So that is very clear. So for those who have questions on the manner of selection or election of the traditional leaders, Sultanate, and including the ulama, uh you can raise your question at the level of the comelec. Okay. My next question, uh Mister Speaker, is on uh the different committees within the political party. So earlier, there were a lot of questions with respect to the percentage. Uh, do we agree on thirty percent? Do we agree with what has been proposed? I know that there are some MPs who do not agree even raising thirty percent uh to fifty percent. Uh, but the speaker told me, uh, do not say, uh, that he mentioned that. So there are those who do not agree with raising that to fifty percent. And the main issue here raised by our women uh organizations and women's, uh women's rights groups is that women should have a voice. And it's not just a voice, a voice in the wilderness, but a voice in the decision-making uh halls of the parliament. And my question is, can we actually propose uh provisions that will increase this voice in the decision-making process within political parties, Mister Speaker? Is this something that uh can be envisioned or has been envisioned by the uh proponent, by the Committee on Rules, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, I myself am uh an advocate of meaningful participation and not just by numbers, Mister Speaker. Even if we put a certain number of women representation, if it is not meaningful, Mister Speaker, then I don't think we will make a lot of difference, Mister Speaker. So the answer is yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. And so, if we talk about regional political parties as stated in, I think it's Article five, section six, Mister Speaker, there is a provision on the different committees that should be set up by every political party internally, in every regional political party. One of them is the Executive Committee. You also have the other uh committees, for example, aside from the Executive Committee, you have a committee on uh the General Party Committee and the other, the other committees. Will the proponent be open instead of, if, if, let's say tomorrow, the proposal to raise the thirty percent to fifty percent uh is not possible, will the proponent be open to the possibility where we include in the mandatory bodies or mechanisms in the party uh women's and sectoral representation in the executive uh committee? So for example, Mister Speaker, I envision a provision that would say that each committee within the political party will have at least one woman and one sectoral member, or we can require the main party, the General Party Committee uh and the um Executive Committee to at least have uh a, a composition, not just a minimum requirement of one, but a composition where fifty percent of the members of that committee within the political party are women and fifty percent are men, only inside the political party, Mister Speaker.
Uh, depending on the language, but that is a welcome uh amendment, Mister Speaker. Uh, we look forward to receiving a language.
Thank you very much, Mister.
For membership in the committees, right?
In the committees, at the committee level. Because, Mister Speaker, I raised this issue, um, it's very easy to say fifty percent, thirty percent, and those are general terms. But we cannot control the electorate. So if they're going to vote for a political party, for example, or for a sec- uh, uh, what's this? A district representative who is a man and, and they're the ones who will win, there is no assurance. But if we look into the political party itself, all regional political parties that would be set up and uh organized would be required to have at least one woman in the main committee, the Executive Committee, and a requirement that fifty percent of uh the political party would be would be composed of women, or at least at the committee level, the General Party uh Committee level, Mister Speaker. I will make the proper uh proposal for an amendment uh tomorrow, uh Mister Speaker. My next question, Mister Speaker, is on the duties. The general duties and restrictions with respect to uh restrictions, reporting requirements of political parties, uh there's also a provision on a proposed subsidy fund to help new political parties uh set up their activities to participate in the regional political uh party system, as well as the mandatory voter education activities among others. So I would like to take note, Mister Speaker, that the Committee on Rules has included a provision on mandatory voters' education that will be conducted by the political parties. And, and this is good, uh this is a welcome improvement, uh Mister Speaker. Uh, but I have a question on this, Mister Speaker. May we seek a clarification on why the establishment of a party subsidy fund has become merely discretionary upon the parliament? What, the, the section states that it, the parliament may allocate, no, uh may provide for a political party subsidy fund, but we know what, what is the implication of this if it is not mandatory? So there are, we are a parliamentary, we're setting up a parliamentary form of government, we have political parties, and then we have sectoral representatives. Um, we may be discussing something a little more advanced, but in other jurisdictions, in other contexts, Mister Speaker, you have a political party subsidy fund that is mandatorily provided by the government to those who are marginalized. So the political parties representing the women, the youth, the, the uh I Ps, et cetera, because we need to somehow provide for them some equitable campaign support. That is the only way that we can encourage all of these different sectors uh to participate. Um, and, and because we know that it would be difficult for them to fight the traditional politicians and now the ten thousand strong regional political parties. So is there a way, uh the, the first, the question is, why is this discre- discretionary? What does the Committee on Rules or the majority, the government of the day, envision? Are we planning to uh draft a law that would just focus on the, on the political party subsidy fund? Or can we propose uh some provisions within the electoral code to put some meat into the single provision on political party subsidy, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, I will answer the two questions, no, separately. The first question is why is it discretionary, Mister Speaker? I think we, uh, uh, part of due diligence would be to look at the uh legal limitations and legalities of spending uh government money for political party activities. For the second question is, is there um, uh, a, in an intention, no? To pass, uh, there is, there is an intention, and I think part of, again, due diligence is identifying or determining what our motivations are for providing a political party subsidy fund. Meaning, we should not be limiting the purposes of a political party subsidy fund to those that we think of, uh as of the moment, and just write it here, uh so as to limit our, and restrict ourselves in the process of legislating a separate law for that purpose, Mister Speaker. So, uh, the answer is, um, there is, uh, the pa- the fact that it appears here and is reflected here as manifests or demonstrates the intention of uh enacting a law for that purpose. But for what purpose and what motivations, that is something that has to be um, uh discussed in a separate law, Mister Speaker.
Uh, that's good to know, Mister Speaker. I have around twenty pages of proposed provisions uh on the political party subsidy fund, including a subsidy fund for all of the sectoral uh representatives, which I will hand over to the proponent for possible incorporation into this future bill on the political party subsidy fund. Thank you, Mister Speaker. My next question, Mister Speaker, is on Article seven, uh section two, with respect to the, again, sorry, with respect to the thirty percent requirement. So all of the women uh and the pro-women are actually proposing fifty percent uh overall, this is general, no, fifty percent. But as I said earlier, we cannot assure uh if fifty percent, but we can assure a minimum uh of thirty percent, those who will win. However, Mister Speaker, there is a way of ensuring that a minimum, at least a minimum, uh thirty percent of those seats will be women. And, and, and that is by providing a zipper provision within the political party. Just the political party. So if, if this is possible, Mister Speaker, where uh the political party will identify its nominees based on a zipper system, the first nominee is male, the second nominee is female, the third is male, and so on and so forth. So even if it is just thirty percent, just to make sure that the women's names are there at the top of the list and not just for compliance, they're uh at the bottom of the list. So when, if ever they win at least four percent of the seats or eight percent of the seats, then we're sure that they will be, the women will be represented. That political party will be able to have two seats with a male MP and a female MP. Is this something that uh can be actually uh possibly included in the uh electoral code at the level of the political party, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, um, all amendments proposed, a language may be submitted, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I would like to manifest, Mister Speaker, uh before you object, Mister Speaker, with all due respect, on the fifty percent, on the zipper, the zipper requirement, Mister Speaker. I would like to, for the record, commend the Committee on Rules for including an anti-political dynasty provision within the political party. I know, Mister Speaker, that there are those who are not uh agreeable to this, but an anti-political dynasty up to the second degree, but only within the political party. Meaning, a husband may run at the district representative level, the wife may run as a candidate, as a may, could be one of the nominees at the political party level. Or a wife may also, or a husband, or a son, or a daughter, or a father can run as a sectoral representative. That is, that is possible. He could be a Sultan, like MP Sultan Marjani Makasalong. Who may run, our, oh, there's uh Sultan Makasalong. So you have uh MP Sultan Makasalong who is a Sultan and who may be the sectoral representative of the Sultanates. But at the same time, one of his wives Mister Speaker, may run as a district representative, Mister Speaker, and that is allowed by the provision, by this provision, uh Mister. by the provision, by this provision, uh, Mister Speaker. And so, I commend the uh, it's, this is a soft landing of the anti-uh, political dynasty movement in the Philippines, Mister Speaker. It's just very soft. It's not uh, you know, strongly worded, and it will just apply to that single uh, political party. So, uh, for the record, Mister Speaker, I would like to commend the uh, Committee on Rules. Okay, almost done, Mister Speaker, just two more. Um, with respect to the non-moro, the non-moro, um, in uh, non-moro I Ps, okay, N M I Ps, the traditional leaders and the representatives. Okay, they're now going to be, just to confirm, except for the non-moro I Ps and the traditional leaders and the ulama, all of the rest of the sectoral representatives will be elected at large directly uh, by the voters. Uh, is this correct, Mister Speaker?
In twenty twenty-eight, Mister Speaker, yes.
Okay, in?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight. But in twenty twenty-five, what would be the manner of voting for the sectoral representatives? Just for the record, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, uh, based on section one, article ten, transitory provisions, Mister Speaker, the mode of um, electing would be through assemblies, Mister Speaker.
Okay.
We will give time to all of these sectors to organize themselves so that they have uh, they're, they are capacitated to join the twenty twenty-eight elections, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, and and that is a good thing, Mister Speaker, that this has been included, and it's more uh, open. Uh, the 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 rules have been relaxed with respect to the uh, sectoral representatives. Now, this is my last question, Mister Speaker. I asked this personally to the proponent earlier, but I would like just to put this on on record. Um, there are provisions in the electoral code with respect to election offenses. And it's a good thing, Mister Speaker, because these election offenses are in addition to the election offenses that are already identified in our national electoral laws, including the general instructions and the decisions issued by the Supreme Court, uh, ruling on the decisions issued by the Comelec and Bang. Um, but I saw, Mister Speaker, because this is one of my proposals, Mister Speaker, with respect to the prosecution of vote buying and vote selling. So, Mister Speaker, the crime, the offense of vote buying and vote selling is already included in the national electoral laws, our national electoral ro- laws, the general instructions, jurisprudence, et cetera. But we know that this is rampang. I'm not a politician, so uh, there was a politician earlier who told me that they don't want this provision because they will buy votes and and some would be selling votes. This is the kalakaran, ganito po talagang kalakaran ng eleksyon sa Pilipinas. But I remember a time, Mister Speaker, uh, I was already a practicing lawyer, Mister Speaker, where there were no, there was no vote buying, and there are still areas in the Philippines where there are no vote buying, and there are those who do not sell their votes, uh, generally, generally. Because there are other ways of uh, killing the, killing the chicken, not the cat. So, anyway, Mister Speaker, I noticed that there is a no inclusion of a specific provision on vote buying and vote selling, and I believe this is a missed opportunity. If the our intent is to set up an electoral system in a parliamentary form of government that's going to resolve in anticipation of possible uh, offenses and crimes that are normally committed uh, in the country. There's a special attention must be directed towards these activities because they delegitimize and undermine our historic electoral process. So, Mister Speaker, can there be a provision specifically on vote buying and selling? But of course, jurisdiction lies with Comelec and eventually, and following the whole remedial process, uh, going up to the Supreme Court. Uh, the elements of vote buying and vote selling are still within the purview of the national electoral co- electoral law, but just to emphasize that these are, uh, this is vote buying and vote selling, these are two of the offenses that we would like to focus on, just like the anti-uh, political dynasty provision. Possible, uh, Mister Speaker. Last question, Mister Speaker.
Um, Mister Speaker, uh, just to give context, the code also uh, refers to national laws, existing national laws and Comelec issuances as uh, being applied. So, for purposes of the election offenses, we made sure that that are already punishable by national law uh, penal, with penal provisions are adopted. But I understand that the need it to emphasize this and make sure that it appears verily in the in the code is um, something that would make to, that would give teeth, no, to to the criminal, well, jurisdiction. This is also a test of the criminal jurisdiction of the power to legislate crimes uh, of the parliament. Um, depending on the language, Mister Speaker, uh, that is uh, something that we can look into, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. That was my last question, and again, I would like to commend the Committee on Rules for a very well and comprehensively deliberated uh, electoral code. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker Liza Alamiya, for the enlightening questions and interpolation. Uh, likewise to our sponsor, uh, the Committee on Rules, their man directly also answered uh, the questions asked. So, at this juncture, may, you may be interested to listen. I will be announcing, making announcement. Uh, the time check is six o'clock, and there's still seven interpolators. So, we will suspend now and resume the interpolation tomorrow, but at an earlier time, ten o'clock. Ten o'clock, so we can finish tomorrow. To make your reservation, Ali Sanki, uh, bukas. Bukas. Continuation ng period of.
Un- unfair naman yun. Karina pa ako dito. Naghihintay.
May ano, may nakareserve kain ka. Kanina pa, so magpaalista na lang po, at we will not skip you tomorrow. Uh, pangwalo ka na.
Karina pa ako dito naghihintay. I was waiting for my ninety.
Alam ko po, nakikita kita kanina. Sabi ko, hindi natutulugah. Nakikinig. So, tomorrow po, tomorrow, Brother Ali Sanki. So, session is suspended until tomorrow, ten o'clock. Continuation ng period of interpolation.